You're there, Tanya.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, excellent. Then, in that case, I call the June 21st Board of Trustees Meeting to order. Macy, can you call, roll please?
Trustee Blakemore, here. Trustee Corvalon?
Here.
Trustee Kums Ismail?
Here.
Mayor Prota Mahold?
Here.
And Trustee Baumhofer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Then we're in session at 7:02. We've got a number of things on the consent agenda. Yeah, I think we've been through the minutes, and I think we've got them exactly where we want them. Thanks Macy for a thankless task for writing those and keeping you up to date. We do look at them, and I think we got it right this time. And then 4.4 is the SRU agreement for the Bakery Brothers. This just formalizes what we decided in a previous session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Let's call the vote.
Mayor Prota Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, we move on to Section 5, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Do we have anybody registered, Macy?
No. I can see those.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience want to speak tonight at this section? Non-Agenda Items. Hearing none, we close out Section 5, the Non-Agenda Items, and move on to Staff Reports, Section 6. And we'll start with the Town Administrator Report.
So, as we've discussed, the staff reports are in the packet. We're no longer, we're not doing a verbal review, and so all of our team's reports, except for Dawn, who is on vacation, are in the packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I had one on the Treasurers Report. It looks like our sales tax revenues are way off from projection. What's going on?
So, we are seeing definitely a decline there, even from historical years, and I don't necessarily have an assessment of why. You know, I don't think that we're necessarily seeing an absence of people, but we'll likely see that spike in the summer. But yeah, just people are not coming like they were to spend money. And you know, I would say with the last two years, COVID had a huge impact on us from a sales tax standpoint because people were not going down below. They were doing all their shopping locally, and we were also a hotspot for people who were trying to leave larger municipalities and wanting to go somewhere else. And so I think we're kind of starting to see that settle out because we were one of the very few municipalities who saw an increase in sales tax during COVID.
Yeah. Okay, excellent. And then one other thing, Miranda, you and I have been back and forth on blowback from the bill on water that went out to people. I was getting some questions about it. I would imagine others were too. You were gonna, you're gonna write something up for the paper?
Yeah, so it'll have to go into next week's paper, but I think one of the biggest confusions is CDPHU makes us write that letter in a very specific way that educates people to lead in copper poisoning or whatever that may be. That's not the case here. What happened is that unfortunately, our utilities team had failed to submit a required report within 30 days. They were just a few days late, but that it was a lead-in copper read, so that's why those types of letters had to go out to everyone. I think another question that came up is why so late? We actually had to wait for our consumer compliance report to go out with it, which we didn't receive until May. And so, once we received that, we then sent all of those letters out with the report on June 1st. And so, I'll write a letter to the editor and also do a post online that clarifies that a little bit more, but people should not be concerned about letting copper in their water. We're actually at such low detectable rates that now we only test every four years, whereas previously it was every two years.
That's great.
So again, just an administrative error, but CDPHU makes us write it in the format that I think created a lot of concerns.
Okay. For 6.4, Tom Marshall, Fine Lovin', did you have anything that you wanted to tell us beyond what's in the report? Okay, good. Okay, the Public Works, we've covered. Community Center, that's already included, and Erica got her report in. So I think we're all set there. If we're okay, can we move on to Section 7? Any questions from the board or from the audience? Good. Okay, let's move on to Section 7. I was bad this week. I didn't write my report. But I could tell you a little bit about what I've been working on. I spent some time with the Food Pantry folks this week to understand how that works and what their challenges are. Friday, I got to go down to Boulder to meet with our congressman, Negoos, and 33 Front Range mayors and hear how much we all have in common, especially the stress of being in a public position these days. So that was good. There's a lot of, there's a lot of experience that was in that room that I'll go back to. I'm really grateful for that. And that's, I think that's, that's the main thing I wanted to talk about at this point. So, Trustee Baumhofer, you have a verbal report as well.
Yes, unfortunately, we had a sickness in our crew, so I was down in Boulder Wednesday night and was unable to attend the Youth Advisory Board meeting. Attempted to join virtually, but they meet through Google Meets, so you need to be invited and let in, and we did not see the thing. So I'm still waiting on the minutes and have nothing to report besides I did not make it to my meeting.
Okay. Trustee Carvalon?
Yeah, I went to the DDA meeting where they discussed the candidates that we're about to discuss later on today's meeting. We saw the mural for the side of the rock shop, and that got approved. Karen came and talked about asking for some money to match a grant should the grant be received for a parking, I mean, a traffic study. And they agreed to give 10. Then Ron had wanted to talk about more investment stuff, that we got pushed back. I feel like I'm missing something.
The new members?
No, yeah, but that was for, yeah, definitely. That happened. So, you know, I have the, but either way, it was a good meeting, and we'll be talking about the new candidates that are coming up. There was some extra ones, so that's good to know. There's that many people who are interested. And then I did, on my own, on Friday, just I had reached out to some open space forestry guys, and we hiked around the back of Big Springs behind Oak Trail to look at some of the lodgepole forests, just to kind of get it on their radar so that when they get future funding to do forestry work, like they did over at Mud Lake, I thought that the Mud Lake work was like so unnecessary compared to how bad it is behind here. And they were really kind and agreed and met with me, and we had a great time talking about trees. So, you know, I guess it all just, one thing has to happen, which would be the foresight to getting on the ridge for them to come in and take care of the open space because then they would use the road. But that was fun. So that's all.
Terrific. And then the only member that's rolling off is Rhea, right?
Uh, Rhea for sure, but I think there's, you know, I don't know.
Steve Carew's term ends in June, and so he is being considered for reappointment along with two other applicants.
Yeah, but why are there two other applicants if it's just Rhea that's dropping off?
Steve Carew's term ends in June, and he has applied for reappointment.
Right.
He's, it's like reelection, but he, so there's two vacancies and three applicants.
Oh, two vacancies, right. Okay. We'll talk about that soon enough. All right, thank you.
Trustee Kums Ismail, Trustee Blakemore, anything to add beyond what is written?
I failed to attend the ProSAP meeting this past month, but I will make a full report on what happened in that meeting and subsequent meeting next time around.
Terrific.
And then Boulder County Consortium Cities Meeting. I think I've discussed what we discussed there with this board before, so I think we're, I think we're good on that.
That sounds like a really good one to belong to. Trustee Blakemore?
So, the multimodal transportation plan application for fundings due Friday at 3:00 PM, and I'm currently receiving letters of support from advisory boards, community organizations, businesses, and developers. And I broke down the list of tasks and with a cost estimate and am reworking the application. So, that's all coming along. There's a lot of different transportation funding opportunities available that I hope we can apply for in the future once we have the transportation plan complete. See what else. Okay, so I met with SAB and Cynthia Baki. We all attended the Clean Energy Summit, and that was sponsored by the Colorado Solar and Storage Association. The goal summit was to find solutions to solar and storage problems. Our problem was to create a community solar garden, given the land constraints in Nederland. That would help move us towards the 100% renewable electric energy by 2025. We decided that contracting with the solar garden provider, such as USolar, would be the most cost-effective and beneficial. And then that provider finances, builds, and manages the garden at no cost to Netherlands, and then we provide a discount of 3% to 5% in the price of electricity to subscribing residents and businesses. So they're moving forward with that. And Eldor would be a flagship subscriber. We'd be looking at a 5-megawatt garden on 30 acres outside of Netherlands. Subscriptions would be solicited from the 804-66 zip code. RTD is forming five subregional service councils to provide advice on RTD's service plans. The subregions are modeled after travel shuts with Boulder County being one. They're planning their first meeting in the fall with four to five meetings each year, and that is about it. Thank you.
Great. Whose land would that 5-megawatt project go onto?
Well, they're looking for property down, inexpensive property on the plains. And that property, I believe, would be identified by the solar garden provider.
Great.
But yeah, so that's a pretty exciting project, and Miranda might have more to add.
Yeah, so we'll, at SAB, when SAB meets on Thursday, we're waiting for USolar to send us their final proposal, and we'll present it to SAB. If they agree, we'll bring it back to the Board of Trustees in July. And so I haven't seen what they pulled together as the final piece.
Okay, excellent. That's good, that's really good news. Okay, good. So we're, I think we're through, unless anybody else has something to say, I think we're through Section 7, and we move on to Section 8. Housing Presentation is-
So Katrina Harms can't make it until 7:30, so my recommendation would be to do the two appointments and then come back to that informational item. Jennifer, do they need to make an official motion to adjust that agenda? Since we'll do two action, information, and back to action?
No, that's fine. You can, go ahead with the appointments.
Does somebody, somebody here has to make that motion to do so, right?
I think you can just go to the-
Let's just go, let's just go right to it. We, we're gonna be working on, so we've got ProSAP, and we've got DDA.
Correct, so we're gonna start with ProSAP, it looks like.
Okay.
So, the Parks Recreation Open Space Advisory Board has three vacancies on their board, and so tonight before you, there are five applications, and it does appear that we have at least the majority on to be able to tell them a little bit about themselves and why they're interested in being on ProSAP. These applicants did go before the ProSAP board at their meeting at the beginning of the month, and it was recommended that Jessica Ansari, Kat Bar, and Lindsay Danforth be the ones recommended for appointment by the BOT, but I believe everyone but Jeff is on tonight. Jeff had noted at the ProSAP meeting that he thought there was gonna be an absence of applicants, and so when he learned that there were more applicants than vacant positions, he was fine to, he didn't formally withdraw his application, but he was fine to not be appointed, and he said he would volunteer and help out where needed. So that is why he is not here tonight, but you do have the other, looks like you have the other representatives.
So you're saying that each person other than Jeff is able to talk to us now?
Actually, I don't see Lindsay, although I do see Chris, and so I don't know.
Okay.
I'll send her a message, but you do have Alex, Kat, and Jessie online.
Let's start in order. Let's start with Jessie Ansari. Jessie, you're on.
Hang on. Yep. Hey, this is Jessie Ansari. Yeah, so I just, I applied for a reappointment to the Parks Recreation Open Space Advisory Board. A little bit about my tenure there. I joined the ProSAP in early 2019, and I was elected as the chair shortly thereafter. Oh, sorry, I just got off work. I kind of ran to get to a computer. So yeah, I'm interested in reappointment. A big part of that is in order to see the projects that I'm involved in. I'd like to see them through to completion. And in particular, the big one that we're working on right now is the Barker Meadows Park Shoreline Restoration Stewardship Project, for which we were awarded a grant of $181,000 last year. So we have got a big move to get volunteers this summer. We've been working on the Trails Master Plan, which I was at the farmer's market this weekend, kind of soliciting feedback from people. I would definitely like to kind of help these projects reach their full and their best potential. We have a good momentum. We have a great board right now on these various projects and tasks. So I definitely like to further share the long-term institutional knowledge that I've gained so far with some of the newest members, and then make sure that when I do leave the board that we have maximum project continuity for some of these things. I'm very, very pleased with our, with the momentum of our board right now and how action-oriented everyone is. So we have, please feel free to ask questions.
I got one for you. Is it appropriate now to ask those questions?
Yeah, that's how the board wants to structure that. You can ask questions after each applicant.
Is there any, after your farmer's market thing this weekend, any consensus on where we should be developing trails, Jess?
Not, not so much. I mean, this is kind of a long-term summer project, so what we've, we've got, it's got its big map, and we have a bunch of Post-it notes that people are writing on there, and we're soliciting kind of feedback for all over the, all over the, all over the town and various, a lot of the feedback has been about where people might like to see it developed, and there's been some interesting feedback from some of the youth regarding like trails towards the high school. So mostly things like that. You can definitely expect to see some more consensus developing as the summer continues.
Oh, that's great. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just throw in something there about the trail to the high school. That has been designed by Boulder County, and it's on the Dr. Cog maps.
That's great. Eric, Jonathan? Okay, Tanya? Thanks, Jess.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations on getting to your computer in time.
Yeah, just made it.
Kat Bar, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Floor is yours, yeah.
Great. So, hi, everyone. So yeah, so as I said to the ProSAP folks a couple of weeks ago, I, so I have lived in Ned for just a little over 10 years in the Big Springs neighborhood, and yeah, have always loved the outdoor spaces and the parks and the trails. But in particular, last summer, I had the opportunity to work with the Parks Team, with Nikki and crew, to help start the park project at Barker Meadows and also just maintain and care for the parks, like Chappita and some of the Pocket Parks around town, and just got really, I don't know, I just learned a lot about how it all works and got really excited about the potential for both what we have and then what we could have, and also learned a lot about what it takes to take care of what we do have. So, but yeah, so that's kind of, I'm just, I'm, yeah, I'm interested in dipping my toes into working with one of the advisory boards and definitely excited, you know, if chosen, to dig right in.
Really appreciate it, Kat. The advisory boards are the backbone of how this town operates. I really appreciate your stepping up.
Thanks.
Alexandra, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
We do.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Zabrick. I moved to Big Springs last summer, and I'll just start off by saying I was unfortunately not able to attend the ProSAP meeting where the candidates were considered the other week. I was on vacation and totally understand why the other spectacular candidates that you heard from who were able to attend have been recommended. But I'm just here in the spirit of, you know, finishing what I started and just making sure my interest is expressed. So just by way of brief introduction, I am an attorney for Vail Resorts. I'm interested in the ProSAP committee, both because I think it overlaps well with my professional skills, you know, navigating legal requirements, complex regulations, managing complicated projects between various stakeholders, and just a personal passion for the outdoors and increasing accessibility. I also started recently volunteering with the community gardens with Kendra at the Food Pantry, and I'm just looking as a newer resident just for more ways to become civically engaged in general and donate my time and resources back to the community. So I know at the committee meeting, there was a kind of discussion about adding more seats to ProSAP in the future, given the interest this year. So if that's a possibility in the future, I look forward to applying then or in the future when there's other vacancies. Thank you for your time.
Thanks a bunch, Alex. I hope you had a good time on your vacation.
I did. As sad as I was to miss a committee meeting, it was nice to be up in Wyoming.
Absolutely. This time of year at least.
Right, exactly.
Lindsay Danforth, are you on?
Hi, I'm here.
Excellent. Your floor is yours. It says you're Chris Larson, though.
Yeah, we're both dialed in together on one computer.
Fair enough.
Yes, so my name is Lindsay Danforth. I am making my tour around all of the different commissions and boards that I can be a part of. Back in 2017, I started on the Planning Commission, was elected to the Board of Trustees, and I'm still looking to stay involved in town because we're such a small town that our voices really do matter. And Parks and Recreation is something that I have a passion for. I love being outside. I love hiking and biking and doing everything I can on these beautiful lands that we have. So I think it'd be great to be involved. I also think it intersects well with my professional career. I am the GIS or Geospatial Information Systems Enterprise Administrator for the city of Boulder. So I have a really deep knowledge of the different data sets that we can use from the county level, you know, to municipalities, and so I can assist in overlaying different data sets to make decisions on trails. I can generate maps if we need to see, you know, different scenarios for trails. I can also assist with online maps, interactive maps, anything mapping related. I am the person to help.
We've been neighbors for three years. I didn't know that.
Hey, if you have a map you want me to make, now you know who to call.
Excellent. I know where to print it, too.
Lindsay made a map for me yesterday for the transportation plan. She did, yeah. She extracted the boundaries of Netherlands in a shape file and sent it to me in zip. So that was really great, and I appreciate it. And how's your mouth doing with the tooth extraction? Surprise tooth extraction this afternoon.
That's why I don't have the video on. My face is swelling up a little bit. Yeah, I just was supposed to have a little checkup and have them look at my wisdom tooth, and the dentist said, "Well, do you want it out right now?" And I was like, "I guess so. I'm on my lunch break." So they numbed me up and yanked out my wisdom tooth, so.
Congratulations. I hope you get, you put it under your pillow.
Right. That should get some good money, I think.
Thanks. Jeff Young, do you want to say something?
So it doesn't look like Jeff is on.
Okay. Miranda, so you said the board recommended, there's, there's five people applying for three appointments, right?
Correct.
Okay, and what's, is there a recommendation?
Yeah, so ProSAP recommended appointing Jessica Ansari, Kat Bar, and Lindsay Danforth.
Okay, we have, does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, action items, so we have to public comment, right?
Oh, that's right. Good point.
But if we could just, yeah, do a little discussion. I mean, Jess, Jessie's leadership on ProSAP, I think, has been transformational for the board and for the town, and in a literal sense. I mean, we're transforming our shoreline due to Jessie's good work, so I have no hesitation in reappointing Jessie to the board, and we'll probably move to reappoint her as chair of that board when that happens.
In perpetuity.
Well, for her sake, I hope not. And then I was very impressed by Kat's application. I was also very impressed by Alexandra's application. That was very, very thorough. Yep, very thoughtful. And of course, Lindsay has been serving town for a while and has, has those skills, which would be really valuable to us on ProSAP. So as ProSAP liaison, I know that we are constantly struggling with mapping in particular and trying to find solutions for that because we don't really have the kinds of maps that we need to work on in order to do some of the work that we want to do. So I can also see a very strong appointment in Lindsay Danforth. So between Alexandra and Lindsay, is, to me, that's the toss-up of where we're gonna go, but the ProSAP recommendation fundamentally makes sense to me, and I-
Great.
-think that we should probably go with it.
Okay, Jonathan?
I think Trustee Kums Ismail spoke very, very accurately about all these. I was very impressed by Alexandra's application. I believe it is a massive toss-up right now for ProSAP and not being a liaison to that board. I wouldn't know which skill set could come more in handy. I believe currently they're working on Trails Master Plan, Parks Plan, or the Parks Regulations that are before us tonight. I believe you will be going back at probably a Maintenance Master Plan, and I couldn't help but notice the, well, long history and skill set that Alexandra could bring to some of the planning process. So I would question, does ProSAP have an alternate yet? You already do.
We do have an alternate, right? It's Ari.
You do have an alternate. It's Ari Goodman.
Ari Goodman, yeah.
And she has a desire to remain as your alternate.
Sweet. I guess in the spirit of the fact that Alexandra has not yet gotten involved in town and the fact that the more folks we can get involved in town, the better, and that I believe Lindsay will still continue to offer her help and assistance to the town of Netherlands, regardless of whether or not she is pointed to the board, and always continues to give us valid and awesome public comment, I would suggest that maybe we appoint Jessie, as I agree with everything Eric said. Kat and Alexandra, specifically to get the skill set of a lawyer in ProSAP could help alleviate maybe potential attorney's fees and other things from our town attorney.
I was gonna ask you first if you had anything else to say.
I have nothing to add.
Tanya?
Yeah, it sounds like everybody's a great candidate, and I tend to want to defer to what ProSAP wanted since they're the ones who are gonna be working with them daily, and so that, that's where I'm gonna go. But I do think Alexandra sounds amazing and welcome to Netherlands, and hope that, you know, you'll keep applying for other boards or for ProSAP and next time this comes up. But because ProSAP seemed to already have kind of chosen, I feel like I just want to go with their choice since they have to work with everybody. already have kind of chosen, I feel like I just want to go with their choice since they have to work with everybody.
We move to public comment. Does anybody, does anybody from the public put their hand up?
Yes, please.
Go right ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is Jesse Ansari, resident of Town Netherland. I just wanted, just wanted to say all the applicants were absolutely amazing, like they were all incredible. And just one thing to note, we didn't actually didn't see their applications. So it did go off of, based off the discussions that we had with the applicants. So like, I would love to, yeah, we would have loved to know what Alexandria was about. So we didn't get a chance to talk to her very much at all. So it would be interesting to know those skills that you're all talking about. But thank you very much. Yeah, everyone was really amazing. We'd be super happy to work with any of them, including me.
And thanks for being transformative. You help our town enormously. Thank you.
But it's a fantastic board and I have to thank everyone on it for being motivated and actually working on things. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Well, anybody else?
I just want to offer clarification for Alex since Alex wasn't there. I did read into the record the letter that Alex had sent to the ProSAB board that outlined her interest. And so I just wanted to reassure her that they weren't totally, they weren't flying entirely blind.
Good point. Anybody else in the public?
I'd like to speak if no one else is up.
It's your turn, Kathleen.
Kathleen Chiffey, 31 year resident, 19 year business owner. I want to thank Jesse. Just blow my mind because I was one of the people that found that we didn't have a ProSAB board operating and she really has just been a miracle for the town. And the amount of energy she has put into this, I just want to thank Jesse. So I want to support Jesse. I want to support Kat and I want to support Alexandria. And I, like Jonathan, I think that Lindsay will continue to help even if she wasn't on the board. So and I am very excited to have new people with such skills applying and showing interest at this point because ProSAB went through a pretty shaky period and I feel like now it's better than it's ever been since I've been paying attention. So so, and thank you, Jesse, for clarifying that the board did not make the suggestion and didn't see everything. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. You're right, it's hard to remember when, when ProSAB was shaky. But I guess it happened. Anybody else in the, Melody, you want to say something? Anybody? Then do we have a motion?
I'll motion to appoint, reappoint Jesse Ansari, appoint Kate Barr, and appoint Alexander Zelbrek to ProSAB.
I will second that. This is Tanya.
Macy, Paul DeBoer?
Trustee Blakemore? No. Trustee Kumsay Smile?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
And Trustee Corvalan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that takes six or nine dot, or nine one. Let's over, move over to the DDA. Miranda, can you read this one?
Yeah, so as we discussed earlier, there are two vacancies on the DDA. Ray Orthner has decided not to reapply, but Steve Carell has. But that still does create two vacancies. You have three applicants for those two vacancies. Roz cannot be here tonight, but you do have Steve and Scott here. And when the DDA did meet with these applicants, they did do a vote and they did recommend Steve and Roz. The vote was very close. It was, it was a one difference between the two of Roz and Scott. But the recommendation from the DDA is Roz and Steve.
Okay, Roz, you want to go first? Not here, okay. Steve, are you on?
He's showing here.
Steve, do you need to unmute?
Hi there. Sorry, I was just telling my children to be quiet because my mic was going to be live.
Okay. Yes.
Hi, so sorry, I just missed the last minute while I was telling them that.
It's your turn to tell us about yourself.
Okay, great. Trying to start my video. So DDA board for four years now. And I think about one and a half years I was the chair. And I've owned a few businesses in town. And they're not retail businesses, but they are brick and mortar. And I'm very interested in helping the town's business community and the whole mission of the DDA to increase property values and thereby increase the TIF revenues for the future projects. My, I've been the chair of the Wayfinding Committee for the last about year and a half, I guess. And I really love that project. That's my favorite project. And like Jess had said, I really feel like I'd like to see that through. And that's a big reason why I'm renewing for another four years on the DDA. And other than that, I really love the idea of better circulation in town and the real, I feel like what could really help Netherland in a business sense and, and social sense is to get people to stop and be able to find parking spaces and then get out of their cars and know where they can go in town to get the goods and services that they'd like. Even if that's just, you know, walking through the town and enjoying the atmosphere of the town. And one other thing from the DDA master plan that really captures my attention and I don't see any real momentum on that in the DDA currently, but for the future, I really love the idea of a river walk in a very low key Netherland fashion. I think that that could help the businesses along the river beautifully and enhance everybody's kind of enjoyment of the town. And so I guess that's it in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from anybody.
On wayfinding, what's the top priority there? Where would you start?
With wayfinding, what we've been trying to follow the mandate of the surveys that we've had out in addition to some various studies that we've read. And sorry, Tom, could you ask your question one more time? I forgot the exact question.
Top wayfinding task in front of you?
Yes. So we're about to set up an action item for next, for July meeting in order to move to phase two of our project that we've hired a outside contractor who helps us design wayfinding and signage and things. They don't produce anything. But so that's our very immediate current project is to move into phase two, which would come over the next 12 months. And that would finalize the positions and which signs we would need around town. And the other part of that that I'm especially interested in is developing an app for anybody who comes to town, including locals, that would they'd be able to download. And then once they get out of their cars, would be able to easily find exact businesses or types of businesses that they'd be looking for. So essentially, in a nutshell, the way I see wayfinding helping our town is to identify the existing parking places that we have that are public parking so that people can get to them easily. And then when they get out of their cars, we would have a kiosk in the parking lot with QR codes as well as a general map to get people walking as pedestrians through the town and being able to locate any of the goods and services of the town.
Perfect. Okay, Eric?
Hi, Steve. Thanks for volunteering to do this again. Much appreciated. I just wanted to ask about the Big Springs parking project and how you see moving that project along and what strategy you might use on the DDA to do so.
Yes, that is another project, you know, I think it ties in really well with wayfinding because we're looking at increasing substantially the number of parking spaces right there as anyone enters the town from the south. And I, I feel like Andrew Doer and Ron Mitchell are the committee for that. So I'm not a committee member. But I feel like the biggest thing is to motivate Tebow to finish up his part of the project because that's what's caused the delay for us. We had a contractor that we had selected and approved the funding for to move ahead, but it required Tebow's part of his parking lot to be done. So I would see us, you know, tactfully and respectfully putting some more pressure on Tebow and letting him know that it's holding up the town side of the project so that we could get it done. Because as I understand from the committee reports that we hear, it's probably only about a three to four week project once it starts. And we're, you know, at the sort of closing in on the end of our window of opportunity for this season.
Thanks, Steve.
Sure.
Karen?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Tanya?
Oh, hi. I was wondering where we can find the information about ways finding with, with the the outside group that was hired? What were their recommendations? Is there like a report that they gave us for stage one? Could you say we're moving on to stage two soon?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Tanya, I can get that together and either give it to you or or do any type of presentation with the board if we needed to.
At some point, that'd be great. Yeah, just kind of.
Yeah, essentially, well, trying to be real quick, but just to answer your question a little bit. Phase one was really identifying what points of interest around town that we wanted to direct people to, you know, what was important. And I think our idea and plan has been to sort of be minimalist about it. So we're keeping it to the more immediate downtown area and, you know, limits of town. So we're not going, you know, we might have some signage for Mud Lake but pointing off that way or on our maps. But things like Mud Lake and West Magnolia and Eldora, we're not thinking that we're going to provide signs for any of those necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Jonathan?
I was just gonna say, thanks, Steve, for continuing to come back after time after time for reappointment. And I believe that your leadership on the DDA and consistent involvement in many projects has been kind of a steadfast thing this town can rely on. So appreciate it. Thanks for coming for reappointment.
Thank you.
Eric? Good. Okay, is, then can we open up to the public? Does any, do you see any hands up?
Do you want to finish with Scott before you go
Oh.
to public comment?
Okay, I thought we were doing public comment on each, but.
I don't think you did that for ProSAB.
Okay, let's go straight to Scott. With the mask off, I know who it is now. Come on up. Yep. Is, tap it to make sure it's on. Yep, it's live.
Can you hear me?
We do.
Okay, I'm Scott Papich. I live over on West Third Street. I have a business that's a consulting business, a B2B consulting business called Outside Intelligence. What that business does is it advises other businesses on market analysis, consumer research, financial and profitability analysis, revenue growth analysis and planning. I do this for a variety of businesses across a variety of industries. Been doing this for about 20 years. And I would say that the majority of the work has been focused in outdoor recreation, hospitality, food and beverage, and retail. In fact, I just recently did a program where I advised or gave, gave a program for over 50 retailers, brick and mortar retailers on how they could better serve their consumers and potential consumers. When we talked about this the other week with the DDA forum, it was suggested by someone that because I don't have a brick and mortar business that it would be somehow either inappropriate or just not relevant for me to be part of the DDA. But I'd like to tell this group that first of all, I'm, I happen to be on the Board of Directors of one of the more popular establishments, brick and mortar establishments in town, and that's the Community Library. As a member of Nedfire, I'm part of the team that helps look out for the wellbeing of all the brick and mortar businesses every day in this town. And then also, you know, running outside intelligence, the very essence of what I do with my client companies is help them figure out who their consumer is, what their consumer's looking for, and how to best serve that consumer and be successful with the market that they're trying to address. So, any questions?
Yeah, I've got one for you. If you were advising Netherlands downtown businesses on how to connect with their customer in the way, treating them as just as another customer, do you have some general advice for the downtown businesses?
Well, I think the DDA needs to dig deep into a concept. One of the strengths that this town has is that it's not like Vale and it's not like Breckenridge. And I see a lot of nodding of heads here. And so I think we all feel that way. And so I think we, we as a community need to dig into what's different about us and how do we build on that strength? Right? And how do we offer businesses and experiences, whether they're outdoor experiences or dining experiences or having a beer on the patio experiences, you name it. That's really our essence as opposed to some big I-70 mountain town experience. And so that's the work of the DDA. And I would say that that would be the first thing we should do is talk about not, not just what do all travelers look for, but what do people look for from us? And what do they keep coming back for from us? Did that help?
It does. And if you're going to boil Netherlands' essence down to two or three points, what are they?
I think, well, you know, people like to refer to us as quirky. That's how a lot of Netherland folk describe ourselves. Quirky, quirky and happy. And I would say that we're kind of a hometown destination is what I would call us. We feel different than someplace that's on I-70 and is full of maximum capacity, lots of chain brands. And so that's how I would characterize us. And that's what makes us desirable. It's not just because we're close to Boulder, it's because we're different.
Perfect. Eric?
Yeah, I won't ask too many more questions, Scott, or you're going to start billing us for consulting. I suppose my big question is, what do you see as, in terms of like down on the ground project rather than big picture stuff for the DDA, what do you see as sort of priority projects that you, that you'd like to see ushered through that board during your time on it if you were to be appointed?
Great question. And I can tell you that it would be a mistake to bring more in front of this board or more in front of the DDA than they already know they have to do. I would say it would be, I mean, they have some priorities. The ones that to me look really most important are going to be First Street Development, consideration of a second bridge, the intersection of Bridge and Lakeview. I mean, come on, we can do something there, right? And it's good for everybody. And I would say any number of potential parking solutions and we all know we need those, right? And we need to get creative on that, but we need to get down to implementation on that as well. If there are other priorities that should come up, I would think they would have to be really, really big priorities as far as commerce and business goes. We have other priorities as a community, but they don't necessarily have everything or anything to do with business or development.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks for asking.
Jonathan?
I didn't have any questions necessarily, Scott, just discussion, I believe, when we get there.
Likewise.
Tanya?
No, I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much.
Okay, members of the public? No, no, I guess, let's see. No, no, I guess, let's see, we've got. No, Roz, are you with us?
So Roz isn't going to be able to make it tonight.
So we can't open up to the public now? Good. Remember, is there anybody who has their hand up from the public?
I don't, uh, we have Ron Mitchell.
Ron Mitchell? Floor is yours. Ron, you want to unmute? You there, Ron? Okay. Katrina, come on up. Can we dance?
I'm going to take this opportunity to speak on the DDA. I'm not gonna recommend anybody, but when I was on the DDA, my my philosophy was we need to make this a town that we want to live in and that we want to enjoy. And that we will invite people to come and enjoy it with us and share that with us. And I hope that you're choosing and looking at the DDA and the DDA is looking at the future in the residents really need to be building and thinking about a place they want to live. And then we share that and help educate tourists on how to share it with us and how to share the mountains. So I hope that you take that in consideration in choosing your DDA persons.
Thanks, Katrina. That's incredibly valuable. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Kathleen Chipite has her hand up.
Kathleen Chipite.
Kathleen Chipite, yeah, um, I want to support just the way the vote went down at the DDA. And I had said that I did want to support Roz because I had gone into her shop three or four times and bought things and just chatted with her, not identifying myself or or any relation to the town of Netherlands. And I thought she she knew fresh insight. And that's why I wanted it. And I had reservations about Scott because Scott wanted to talk about the development of the downtown area, which is mostly private property and really not in the realm of the DDA's, what the DDA does. And I often like he seemed to say basically that people had been prevented from opening business in the downtown area. And that we were, it somehow Netherlands was preventing people from opening businesses. And that's, I don't even know what where that comes from, but I've never identified that. Anybody that wants to open a business can contact the landlord and and open space and do it. So I just thought Roz had such a good vision for the community and said a lot of positive things. And since she's new, it's newer to the community, it's fresh eyes coming in. And so I, and of course, Steve, I want to thank Steve. I think he does a wonderful job cheering the DDA and and even though I don't agree on all of the ideas, I I support the Riverwalk and and a bridge down by Chupita probably. And, yeah, and I just want to thank Steve for volunteering again. And thank him for the way he runs the meetings. And so I'm supporting Roz and and Steve. And those are my reasons. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks for keeping a business open downtown.
Yeah, it's rocking. There's a lot of business right now, so.
I need a new hat.
Good.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to comment too. I'd like to respond to the to Kathleen's comments and if anyone interpreted that I was implying that the town is preventing people from opening or running businesses. There was some miscommunication or misinterpretation. I don't believe that's true at all. My point has been and will continue to be that Netherlands as a community should have plenty of opportunity for people who want to work here and people who want to run businesses here. We're a local community. When I said earlier, we're a hometown destination. That's what I mean. Local community as opposed to, you know, a place that's a destination for travelers who are looking for something just like I seventy. I know that typically the DDA has people who actually own businesses right downtown. I would say that my perspective is going to be a little bit different. Because I don't have a self-interest in that. I help companies do that and help them figure out how to do that successfully and to the to the most appropriate manner for the the audience that they've got and the consumers that they're working with. And if I can lend that skill and that talent and that experience to the DDA, I would be happy to do that. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thanks a bunch, Scott. Ron, it's your floor.
I wanted to address Scott. For businesses to be successful, their, if they rent, their ownership, or the owner of the place they rent has to be successful too. And in terms of redevelopment, everyone knows that I own a lot of property in the downtown area. But for redevelopment occur, that to occur, I have to be profitable too. And to do that, I really believe that we need to have an increase in the height limit to have three stories. Do you support an increase in the height limit or do you not?
Ron, I I would be more willing to have that conversation if I were part of the conversation.
You are part of the conversation. We're talking right now.
Ron, thanks for your input, but I think it's a zoning issue. And probably not your main, there's not anything we're gonna resolve tonight.
Of course not. I support Roz.
Okay. Anything you want to say, Scott, before we?
And no, I agree with what you're saying, Tom. I don't. I think height limits need to be discussed. And I mean, there's obviously a lot to discuss there. I think it's more appropriate for zoning and for the actual DDA right now. My my hope and my intention is to try to be part of the DDA. And to get to that point.
Good.
Thank you.
Before we close out comment, public comment, is there any other public comment? Not hearing or seeing anything? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Can we have some discussion?
Discussion.
Uh, yes, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions for Miranda. Do you, do you know if there's any residents currently on the DDA? Any residents of the?
Well, Kate Mazengale's on. I know that Raya, I believe, resided in the DDA district but was also a business owner. I don't believe there's just any just resident. Who doesn't have a brick and mortar.
Okay, so.
That that is allowed in the.
You're interrupting me. Correct, yes. So, yeah, this, I was gonna say that. The statutes require the board members to be residents, landowners or business leases. And I think there's some benefit to having a diverse board. Because the residents really have, you know, an interest in the revitalization of the downtown area. As do the businesses and the landowners. And then I was wondering how, what the vote was on the DDA for the new members. How many voted for and against, and if it was like a slate that they voted on or individual members?
Oh, they did a silent vote and let me, sorry, I should have pulled it up. I had a feeling.
I can, I can jump in, Miranda.
Yeah, I have it right here, Kate, but if you have. Go ahead.
Okay, so there were seven votes for Steve Carew, five votes for Roz Bagtaz, and four votes for Scott Pappich.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Any other questions? Cool. Anybody else want to want to make a point, ask a question?
I mean, I'd say that I think Steve Carew has done a great job. And every interaction that I've had with Steve has been positive and rational and to the point. And I think that the priorities are straight for the most part there in terms of where the DDA should be working towards or where I hope they might work towards. Obviously, that's their purview. And then on the, basically on this kind of decision between Roz and and Scott. I am leaning quite heavily towards appointing Scott Pappich. I think that the application was compelling. I think the expertise is compelling. I really appreciate that Roz is stepping up to do this role, but also you know, I think that there's there's benefits to being a new, fresh voice in town. And there's also challenges to being a new, fresh voice in town. And then having having a resident of the neighborhood who also has a business there, I think, makes a lot of sense. And someone who's been there a long time and has been engaged in in town politics a long time. And really, also, in some ways, I want to put this on Scott to to be on this board and and to start voting on in line with his opinions that he's been sharing with town for a long time. So I think it'd be great if you were on that board.
While saving lives and putting out fires.
Indeed.
Okay, we're gonna go to Tanya as trustee, as liaison to the to the board.
This is really tough for me because I know Roz personally and really love her store. I think she's done a great job, like just really classed it up beyond most stores, great taste and wonderful person. Scott also seems like a great person, great ideas, great experience. And so I am really torn and I cannot, you know, I can't really, I don't want to make that choice really. So.
So that means.
I guess I'm thinking still about, yeah, I was definitely gonna go with Steve just because he's got the experience and wants to keep coming and and so, yeah, my choice now is, I mean, I think I yeah, so that that's where I'm at. I'm still kind of thinking. And so I'm just listening at this point.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments, questions or points they want to make?
Yeah, I guess. I think I'm hearing it sounds a foregone conclusion. We are reappointing Steve Carew back into his awesome job at being the Chair of DDA. One thing that wasn't mentioned, but it is mentioned by Scott Pappich in his application is since the formation of the DDA and the business is choosing to apply their business taxes. Netherlands Fire Protection District had lost the funding. So for the last, I believe, four years, DDA has been providing this funding for the Netherlands Fire Protection District. I cannot think of a better individual than somebody who is both a part of the Netherlands Fire Protection District, has the skill sets for being an analyst as well as an advisor to businesses to fill the open role. I think in the past, Rick Henderson has had to jump in and kind of whatever time he could quickly try to request this funding. And I think that Scott being there could not only be a benefit for having a neighborhood perspective, but could also help bring the Netherlands Fire Protection District more in line with the business owners and open up a more friendly as well as access to information, fire codes, all the above. So I could go either way, but I do believe that with the number of business owners that are currently on the board, that it would be a benefit to have an outside resident perspective, especially with the analysis. So I would lean toward appointing Steve Carew and Scott Pappich for these two.
One point of clarification, Barb Hart is the Board Chair.
My bad, you are right. I should have known that. I was their liaison when that happened.
He's got a story to run against you.
I would, I move to appoint Steve Carew and Scott Pappich to the NDDA.
I'll second.
Macy, call the vote?
Trustee Kim Zysma?
Yes.
Trustee Baumover?
Yes.
Trustee Blake Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mahold?
Yes.
And Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, congrats to each of you. And Scott, thanks for coming in tonight to to give us a little more color. Appreciate it. I guess we're gonna move on to.
So Katrina is here now, if we want to go back. And and her informational item, just as a clarification, it's actually just a full update on the Peak to Peak. Housing and Human Services has a housing component, but she's gonna do a full overview.
Okay, Katrina, the floor is yours.
Um. Thanks for letting me speak. I was, I could have done it by my phone in the car by the side of the road, but I sped up here to try and get here to do it. So I really appreciate you setting my item aside for a few minutes. Probably about six or nine months ago, I updated the Board of Trustees on what the Peak to Peak was up to and what they were doing. A lot of people are new, putting some things in the record. And I'm just not sure, and you're having a meeting with your commissioners, and I wanted to throw out some of the things that the Peak to Peak has been working on that you should be aware of and that will help you communicate some of the things you may want to talk to them about with regards to human services. And I included the history of the Peak to Peak, well, a little bit about the history of the Peak to Peak. I didn't want to dwell on stuff that was actually in the packet too much, but I did want to mention that wasn't in there that the Peak to Peak Alliance has been operating since 2018 and has made valuable progress on working with agencies. Western Boulder County, Gilpin County municipalities and Boulder and Gilpin Counties to help providing agencies connect with mountain organizations and the clients that they serve. Included in the packet was some of the agencies and organizations that are on it, a list of our accomplishments and subcommittees and additional work. And I'm not sure if people are aware that the Peak to Peak has managed various subcommittees. The Peak to Peak isn't, they don't have a bank account, they're not a 501(c)(3), they're an alliance. So they're a group of people coming together to try and solve problems by communicating to each other directly. We had a lot of agencies just coming up to Netherlands and not knowing what to do. And this was a way to kind of corral everybody and and connect them with the people that they need to be connected with. That has resulted in some really huge impacts, like a mountain resource liaison. Creating and supporting subcommittees like NISH, the Netherlands Interagency on Camping and Homeless Encampments. I probably got that wrong again. I cannot remember that one. We have the Mountain Health Collaborative, which is a group of people that got together that when there's a disaster, they pull together the Medical Reserve Corps, Red Cross in terms of mental health and health and providing health. They're a subcommittee that meets occasionally. There's a housing subcommittee that just recently, within the last six months, started meeting again. Because we've been talking a little bit more about housing and there's ARPA money and there's opportunities that the housing subcommittee wanted to discuss. The Mountain Mobility Committee was formed because VIA gave us a paratransit bus that we need to move into the community and the Peak to Peak has been working on doing that. And then also, we've arranged for and managed COVID vaccine and testing clinics. Yes, we will have under five testing clinics up here, which I think is going to be great for our families. So now I just want to update you a little bit on each of the subcommittees. Won't take too long. NISH with the changes in the Presbyterian Church's staff and management is not sure it's going to happen. They wanted to give their money back to Boulder County and Boulder County called me and said, we don't want the money back. We want somebody up there. So I have a meeting with them tomorrow. I thought it was all over. I thought it was done. But I have a meeting with them tomorrow and they're still willing to see how we can keep that money up here for a forest outreach person who can help coordinate with all the Boulder County agencies that come up with, come up every week to make sure we're tracking issues. Boulder County agencies that come up every week to make sure we're tracking issues, piles of trash, getting people help when they need it, and kind of, oh, educating about fire danger and providing trash bags to help in those areas. So we're hoping, since Boulder County still wants to talk with us, that we can keep that one going. So that was a bit of a change. We are working on the Peak to Peak Emergency Plan. We've had a kind of local, kind of everybody jumps in if something happens plan, which wasn't always really effective or efficient. So we've been working with town to, with Miranda and the Community Center and the Clothing Closet and the Peak to Peak to figure out how we best help in an emergency, especially before Boulder County shows up. You know, what is it that we can help with before or when Boulder County or when Red Cross shows up? When do we need to put food out? When do we need to help with those kinds of things? So we're working on that with the new chief and Jen and at the police department. So that's been something we worked on. Mobility for All, VIA gave us the old Gold Hill Peak to Peak line, and Boulder County is giving us money for a part-time administrative mountain transportation coordinator, which they expanded to help work more with it because I'm just not, I'm out of capacity. So I asked them if they could change that to be more helpful overall, and they said yes. So we're looking at signing that contract here in the next week or so. But true for Netherlands. Not sure where she's gonna sit, not sure what's gonna, you know. One of the things we need to think about is where we put people as we move forward. And we'll figure that one out. I mean, that can be a work from home, but it's also a thing, something to think about. There's a survey going out, probably not this week, beginning of next week, we have a survey going out to assess the needs for transportation. Not the needs, but the needs that a paratransit bus could handle from Gilpin to Allen's Park with pantries, senior activities. Allen's Park doesn't have a rec center, those things. So the housing subcommittee attended the walkthrough of the town shop site and got some ideas and felt like they were ready to really, really engage and be that supporting committee of the housing effort in Netherlands. The organizational tax funds are gonna go to help paying for the housing study. This committee wants to help with the housing study. We want to assist Miranda and the staff. We want to make this happen. So we're on board for this, whatever needs to happen. Kristy Vendetti from EFA and also a longtime local, and Stephen LaFavor from Teens Inc. are the co-chairs on that. We have a great, we have a great committee. I like it. And then, they're very interested in the old town shop in terms of housing. So that's probably no secret. And then the one other thing that the Peak to Peak has done over the last year is work with the ARPA fund process that Boulder County went through. And the commissioners just approved the projects that they're gonna move forward. And I was a co-chair on the Mental Health and Social Resiliency. Robin Bohannon, who's the head of Boulder County Community Services, was very interested and very supportive of the fact that we really need help. And it's not necessarily always with the programs, but it's the access, it's the fact that we don't have internet, that we don't have ADA buildings or rooms, and that our organizations, you can't hand them a program because they don't have the capacity to actually manage them. So I feel like that was really hurt by Boulder County staff. It would be nice when the commissioners are here that you reiterate some of those things. I was also very, we also were able to have a mountain person on all three of the working groups. So I think we did get some good input. I think people kind of got tired of me raising my hand going, "What about the mountains?" And I know Miranda was in a new group, and people just are like, "What, what, what mountains?" I think it really gave them an insight into the fact that we're up here and that we need help. And we need to remind them that we're sales tax, we're tourists, we're money for them. And again, you can't, the starting point for programs in Boulder is here. The starting port for programs in Netherlands is way back here. And if you're gonna holler equality and equity, you need to make sure that you're starting back here with the communities that have to start back here. So that was one of the things that I feel like I've said a zillion times over the last nine months, but as the commissioners are up, I just, I hope that you can reiterate that. The other thing that's really distressing is the fact that we see so much money grant possibilities go away because we have no shovel-ready plans. We don't even have plans to plan a shovel-ready plan. We are missing out on so many things. I sit there in these meetings and listen and hear about all this money that's just flying around, and we, again, it starts over here. We need to try and figure out how to get it, but it's also reminding the commissioners that we're not, we don't have access to being here because of what we are, a small rural town. We have to remind them that we have to start back here, and some of that money is ours. That sounds a little selfish, but equality, that's what they keep saying. That's what we need to remind them. And I think that's all I have to say. Happy to answer any questions.
Eric, did you have some? I do, and I absolutely agree. I mean, this, on the consortium of cities, this is the, what I'm harping on every meeting, and they're probably sick of hearing about how mountain communities are under-resourced and no one is ever talking about them, to the point where on their graphics, they cover us up with some other like little, like the legend, you know, when the key to the graphic covers up Netherlands, it always just like, strikes me right in the heart, right? Because they're just like, wait, what? Where are you from? Trustee who? Trustee where? Yeah, so that is frustrating, and I do think they need constant reminding of that. What I was gonna ask for though, and I don't mean to ask for even more from you folks, but it would be great for us to have a list of talking points from you that we can go to the commissioners with when they meet with us so that they can hear kind of in one voice what we all need and what we're all looking for, rather than kind of this scattered way that we are constantly pressuring them.
Happy to give you the inside scoop on the conversations from the ARPA meetings and other meetings that I've had, like the NISH meetings and things, so that you sound way, so that you sound over here.
Right.
Happy to.
That'd be great. And I did want to ask about NISH. So you mentioned that restructuring at Presbyterian Church has kind of put the program in doubt. Is there no one currently like assigned to heading NISH? It's a vacant position, and there's no share liaison right now? There's no one doing outreach for this summer?
This morning, there wasn't.
Okay.
I will know more tomorrow. I thought it was done. But I heard today that there's a possibility that it might not be completely over. I believe in it. NISH was created, it was a Claudia and Hanson program, so it was built so much around them, and they're not here. And the Presbyterian Church applied for the grant, but it needs to change to what the current, to whomever's gonna run it.
Right.
So the money's still there. If they have kind of released it, we have the opportunity to kind of rebuild it and figure that out. So yes, if anybody wants to be a forest outreach coordinator, I think it is really fun.
Well, the last time I was really engaged was with Henry Schliff, who was running up across a lot of challenges, particularly with the Forestry Service, who were unhappy that we were going into the forest at all, and suggested that nobody from this organization should even be there in the campground. So there seemed to be a lot of wires crossed in terms of what Hanson had worked out with the Forest Service versus what happened after Hanson left.
And that would have been the switch.
And there's a lot of questions over whose jurisdiction these things are, whether or not it's appropriate to have somebody going back there. And I will say from experience, because I've done a lot of write-alongs with both sheriff's deputies and with Claudia when she was chair, and the only reason why the numbers are low is because we're not going back there, right?
That's interesting.
I mean, and that is my persistent fear, is that things look like the numbers are lower in terms of folks who are camping out in the woods for, let's say, non-recreational purposes, out of desperation, out of lack of housing, out of, you know, a mental health crisis, or out of an addiction crisis, whatever it might be. One of the reasons why we're not seeing the numbers is because Claudia's not going back there anymore and recording the numbers, right? So just because we don't get the numbers in doesn't mean they aren't there. And there are no, you know, county authorities, sheriffs are not going further back than designated campsites, right? And there's dispersed camping. I know that Henry was finding people who had been lighting bonfires and split trees in dispersed camping far outside of designated campsites. So this is a real issue, not to mention the human waste problem, which means that we have human waste running on top water down the slope into people's wells, into people's yards. It's a legitimate issue that I think that we need to be tackling as a town. So my first, I mean, I know that our town staff is stretched, but immediately I would think, how can the town, you know, support maintaining some kind of program where we are at least focusing on the areas that are directly around us, the campgrounds that are directly around us, West Mag, Gordon Gulch, Ruby Gulch, these sorts of places, just so that we can keep tabs on what's happening? Rainbow Gathering's coming back. I mean, you know, you've got Dead and Company playing live shows again. It's all gonna come back, and so we do need to be prepared rather than picking up the pieces once something goes wrong again.
We moved the position to be a little bit more of an outreach coordinator who could gather information because according to Boulder County Community Services, there's somebody coming up every day of the week, but they're not going deep like you're talking about. We do need that local connection.
It's really hard to know where to go. I mean, you need to be talking to people, and it is folks in those communities who talk to each other and know who's in the deepest crisis when something really, you know, dangerous is going on, and they can alert our person in town, and they can get ahead of it rather than deal with a potential crisis.
And I definitely will take that back to my meeting with Boulder County tomorrow, and hopefully it'll be good news and we can continue with the, finding the right person to, at least we know if somebody from Boulder County's coming up every day, we have a team. And if we have somebody local, we know we can go a little further.
And maybe a way that we can, maybe they can help us formalize the relationship with the Forest Service a bit.
So the one, the one meeting I was on with the Forest Service, the Forest Service was on it, and they provide the training for the person, for whatever person that does this.
Okay, great.
And they're the ones who provide, they provide Forest Service training for all of the Boulder County agencies that come up here. This is, these are the forest rules, these are, you know, what information you share. So I got the feeling that the Forest Service was more involved, and maybe again, it was the, between the change from Hanson to, and Claudia to Henry, that it didn't, maybe that didn't happen. So I will, I definitely will take that into consideration, but I have hopes that we'll be able to continue this.
Great. Yeah, I'd hate to see the program dissolve.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anybody else want to speak? Karen does.
Yep.
I have a question. This is Tanya. Still back on that niche, so I'm just trying to understand what happened. I know Hanson retired. In the, there is still funding available for the outreach coordinator? There just isn't somebody to manage that person, or what exactly is the problem?
There's not a person to do what Hanson and Claudia and Henry after that were doing, which is.
So there's still the monies available, but they just, you need to hire somebody? Or is it all volunteer work?
No, this is a paid position. There is money for this person to do the work.
So is there other active help wanted?
Yes, I've been running ads.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Problem is, it's like any Netherlands job, it's a part-time job.
Right, it's a part-time job.
He's well, people are looking for a little more than that, and they don't.
Yes.
So.
Gotcha. No, I hear you. It's hard to find people for part-time, especially nonprofit jobs, but so that's just for me to know, like just for outreach when I'm talking to people, that the job is available, and where can we find the job description?
Email me at, I posted the full one on Facebook, but the easiest way is to just email me at katrina@netherlandsfoodpantry.org.
Okay, thanks.
Or call the Food Pantry.
And then, wait, there, one other question about, I can't remember what it was. I guess I'll come back. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So thanks for coming, Katrina. I do agree that we have limited resources and capacity to respond to all the grant opportunities that are out there. And in addition to responding to the grant opportunities, there's the issue of administrating the grant and also the matching funds. And I'm hoping that Boulder County can help us out with some of the matching funds for grants that we might want to pursue in the future. I, I'm of course very interested in the Mobility for All program. There is a bus service that runs along Coal Creek Canyon from Idaho Springs to Silverplume, and it's called the Roundabout. It's a shuttle, it's very successful. It takes people to King Supers and Walmart. And then I have something that you might want to look at when creating the paratransit route. And then I have a couple of specific questions about the paratransit. You say it will go to Costco and King Supers? And where are those located?
Where, whichever Costco and King Supers people need to go. We obviously are gonna group that. So if there's a group of people that want to, that shop at Costco and Superior, that's something that we could do. We won't take one person. So we'll take some coordination, and that's why we have this transportation coordinator coming on board.
So is this a fixed route or on-demand?
It is on-demand fixed.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, if you can loop me in on that, I'd be interested.
Yeah, I didn't know that that was your thing, so you'll be added to the Mountain Mobility meetings.
Thank you.
I just had one, but I'll hook you up with Angel and make sure you're invited to the meetings and that we keep talking about what you're doing and what we can help you with and keep you updated on it.
Excellent, thank you.
Katrina, I just want to say, as an alliance, those calls are profound to me, to watch people geographically across a lot of distance with very common set of problems, work together, not necessarily as a town board, but as an alliance, there's no, it's more like a huddle than anything. And when I went down to see the mayor's last Friday, it's the same thing. I think you hear a lot of commonality from many corners of the woods, and it's community is in democracy at its deepest level, and I really appreciate what you're doing. I learn a lot.
The alliance, I can't take credit for that, but I'm glad it's still going, and I love seeing what happens. I started it in the middle of the pandemic, and I was like, and so these were Zoom calls? I'm like, what's going on? Nobody's talking, nothing's happening. And then somebody was like, people go back after the meetings, and they're like, I remember somebody saying something, or Kristy with EFA up here, Colleen with the agency on aging, just hearing things, and then something will cross their mind. So it is a pretty powerful group, so I'm really happy it's around.
Thanks. Anybody else from the board have anything? Is appropriate to open to the public?
It's typically informational items you don't open to the public, but you can obviously always choose to do so. but you can obviously always choose to do so if you'd like.
So I can make that choice?
You can.
I make that choice. Is there anybody from the public have anything to say or a question?
Oh, and Tanya, if you think of your question, feel free to reach out.
Oh, yeah, I did think of it. You were saying that so many of our grants, we can't apply for grants because we're not shovel-ready. And, and so it's like this big catch 22 that we can never apply because we're not shovel-ready. What would be the best way to combat that? Like just pick something and put town budget into getting shovel-ready for it? I mean, because otherwise if you can't, if you're going to apply for a grant to get shovel-ready for something, then it's going to take like 10 years before it happens.
Which is kind of why Netherland's in the situation. It is.
Yeah.
So I think what you need to do is you need to express the fact that you, you need funding to get to shovel-ready. I think that's one thing that you can and should ask for. You don't have the money to do that. But if you had, if you had money for a project and you have the town shop site, you have the stone garage, you have some things that could, could be turned with some money put to creating a project that, that, that showing the commissioners that you, that, that those things are there, that you, you could get there with some help.
Right.
And that they're doing a disservice by not, by just stepping over you because you're not there. So I really, what you need to do is you need to express that and ask how they can help and how they can understand. And when you're talking to people like Dola and other people, they may not have to, but if we don't keep saying that, it's not going to move the, move the needle any.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you, Katrina.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tanya.
Tanya, well, Tanya, you, that was the question you were waiting for, right?
Oh, yeah, that was one I, yeah, thank you.
Board, anything else? Katrina, thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
Not just for tonight, but for everything you do. Nine dot three. Miranda, do you want to set the table?
All right, I would love to. So tonight, at the end of the day today was the opportunity for someone to withdraw their application or to amend. No one did so. So tonight we'd like to go ahead and move forward withdrawing the lot for how applicant, or excuse me, how the trustee and mayoral candidates would be listed on the ballot. Last time we did the wheel of names. I think it works really well. So my recommendation is to do the, the wheel of names. And the question before you is, do you approve drawing lot in that format? And then if so, we'll pull it up and have some fun.
Do we need to motion on this?
Yeah, I would, just so we have that, that this is your, your desire. The alternative is we can pull names from a hat. We can do it in a lot of different ways. This is just my recommendation to you.
So we're taking public comment on the method by which we're going to be drawing lots.
Correct.
Has anybody got their hand up? Or anybody in the audience have, want to take the podium and voice their opinion?
Kathleen does, and she'll need to call in.
She'll be dialing in?
Yeah, it'll take her a couple minutes.
Kathleen, are you on?
It takes her, it'll probably take her a minute or two to go through the whole, all the digits.
Okay. Kathleen, let us know when you're here. How do you know this, Miranda?
She raised her hand. I know she has to call in.
Okay, gotcha.
We've got it down.
I'd be in favor of drawing of lots for all of the positions we're in now.
Yours included?
Oh, yeah. Your call to service by lottery.
Every meeting.
No more elections.
The old Athens way. I like it.
Yeah. Spartacus.
Kathleen's recommend, she emailed the public comment and just, it says, it said Kathleen to buy names in a hat.
Okay, good. Anybody else showing up, Miranda?
Not that I see.
Then board, could we have a motion?
Her comment was to do the names in a hat as the means of drawing lots.
Well, what, why? I don't understand why that would be different than the, the wheels of names.
So that's what we had done in 2020 when we were all in a room together. Obviously, we did the wheel of names and we were all virtual. Still random.
Okay. Well, I move to approve drawing the lot for the special election using the Wheel of Names online program.
A second.
Macy, call the vote, please.
Trustee Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore.
Yes.
Trustee Kumsay Smile.
Sure, yes.
Trustee Corvalan.
Oh, yeah.
And Mayor Prostam Mahold.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I, sorry, I can't really make this too much larger.
Who is pink?
You're pink. So these are, these are the mayoral candidates. So you have Tom Mahold and Billy Giblin here, and I will go ahead and get this spin rolling. All right, I'm blind there. All right. So what this means is Billy Giblin will be listed first on the ballot and Tom Mahold will be listed second.
We're in alphabetical order, Billy.
And then.
Yeah.
And I just want, Stephen, are you on? I don't want to mispronounce your last name. Is it Sepick? I don't know if he's.
It is Cpec.
Cpec, thank you. Okay.
Cpec.
So this will be for trustees. And we'll get this, so we have Riley McAllister, Stephen Cpec and Jesse Severs. So the first person listed on the ballot will be Jesse Severs. Okay. And then Riley and Stephen. That will be the order on the ballot. Great.
Riley, stay in the pink.
Okay, that's it. Done.
Thanks all. That was, nine dot three went pretty quickly.
I know. So fun.
Can I request a formal break before we move forward?
Bio break for, it's five minutes. We'll be back, let's say at 45 past.
Sounds good. Appreciate it.
Time's up. We're, can we go back into session? Do, do we need, we don't need to call a vote or call a roll call again?
No, I just confirmed that Trustee Corvalan is still there.
Trustee Corvalan, you're still with us, right? Trustee Corvalan.
Yeah, sorry. I couldn't find my mute.
Okay, fair enough. So let's go to nine dot four, ordinance eight twenty-seven parks regulations. Miranda?
So this is coming back to you. So just a reminder, we brought this before the Board of Trustees in May, May 3rd, 2022. It is a ordinance that outlines some recommendations for rules for parks and open space that Prostab had worked on with our town attorney and the police department. When this came before you in May, you had made some recommendations about putting better language regarding the town administrator's authority under section 11 102(c) and also changing the time to say rather from dusk to dawn to 10 p.m. to 5 a.m. You asked that we bring this back before Prostab. We did so on May 19th. So it's now coming, and they approved it unanimously with those changes. So it's now coming back before this board for adoption. If the Board of Trustees does adopt this tonight, then it would go into effect July 23rd.
One of the first things I would ask is the board who was here at the time, if there's any background that needs to be made, fill us in because two of us are new.
So this did come before this board. It came to you in May. You were here. It was like your first real meeting though, Mayor Prostam Mahold.
Yeah, I was, my head was spinning.
Like, right? You were just getting into the thick of it. I would say, you know, that this is really important for Nikki Dunn, the parks manager, and Chief Fineleven.
Right.
They struggle with a lot of enforcement because there's nothing in the code. So we went through a couple edits of this with our town attorney and feel like this is the most appropriate language that we can put into code.
So, and I can give you a, a little timeline because as Prostab liaison, I've been involved in the conversation from the beginning. So first, Marsh Johns at the time came to us with this issue where people were complaining about people misusing the park and they weren't using it according to the rules that were posted. And yet there was nothing in town code that actually made any of those rules enforceable. And so Prostab decided to take on the task of actually having those rules in the town code. So that's where this need comes from.
Right.
That's why we're doing it in the first place. And then we looked at Boulder County's Parks and Open Space rules and regulations, thinking we're contiguous and surrounded on all sides by these rules. We might as well in some way be similar in the way that we do things. So we started from there, did a draft, cut a bunch of things that we didn't think were relevant to the town of Netherland, even though they might have been relevant to Boulder County. Added the provision for the town administrator to be able to create a rule that then the board would evaluate at the subsequent meeting in case something needed, you know, there was a, you know, something breaks and they need to close something down. Then we, you know, the park hours change because, you know, something needs to happen. So we figured that that made sense. So then this is what you have before you.
And so were there others, attorney nets? Were there other significant issues beyond time, timing and anything like that that changed?
No, I think this is pretty standard comprehensive park regulations. So, yeah, those were the, I think those were the only two revisions since the last Board of Trustee meeting.
Great. And Miranda, I'd ask you, how do the, does the regs, as they stack up, match the reality of, of the challenges of the last year?
I think these are really fitting. I think this is what, exactly what Chief Fineleven, the police department and Nikki are looking for, is that ability to provide a bit more authority, some guidance. You know, they're not trying to deter anyone from using our parks and open space, but just doing so in a responsible way. And when people opt not to, they have that enforcement to take action where needed.
Right. Tanya, any questions from, on your side as we go around the table that make a decision on what to do?
I know. I have no questions. Thank you.
Karen?
I was just looking at my notes from the May 3rd meeting and there was something, section 11 109 about no person other than persons authorized by, show, park a motor vehicle between sunset and sunrise. Okay, so I think that, did you change the time on that from 10 p.m. to 6 a.m. or leave it at the sunset and sunrise for motor vehicles?
So as it is now, it's been changed. I will say for the record, I think I'm still against making it a time. Just because in the winter, there's going to be five hours of darkness that need to be enforced when the parks are technically open. And that seems difficult from a staff point of view, from a policing point of view. I, I think it should still be sunset to sunrise.
It was changed though, to 10 p.m. to 5 a.m. Are you, and M, that's 11 109(c).
If you look at the red line copy, you can see the change.
Yep. 109(c), okay.
But at the, at the.
Okay, I see.
I've been, I, I was against the change when it first came about and I think I'm still against it. I understand that times are more specific, but simultaneously it seems like we have large variance in when the sun goes down because of our latitude. And it's a better way of conceiving of the way that our parks operate. Because when they technically are open. uh, way of conceiving of the way that our parks operate, uh, because when they technically are open, when it is dark, I think that that's confusing.
I agree.
I, I think, uh, we had a resident who, um, runs the trails early in the morning, and so she was requesting that we push it back to, um, five A M. Instead of the sunrise.
I believe it reads, no person shall remain in the park, which technically means somebody could run through the trail, walk their dog through Chapeeta Park. It is simply to enforce that if somebody is sitting in the pavilion all night, that they can be asked to leave.
Good distinction. Thanks.
I agree with that.
Um, in regards to trustee Combs' Ismail's request, I do actually understand his argument. We go from sunsetting at about four forty-five during our
Yeah.
darkest
Exactly.
winter, and then it's about nine thirty. So instead of sunrise and sunset, could we tie that to civil twilight? A technical term that is actually registered online daily so that an officer can say, civil twilight.
I kind of feel
Madison question, I guess.
I feel like we've
Googling civil twilight.
There's twilight, there's civil twilight, and there's actual sunset, but they're all technical terms that actually Google clocks for us that would give our police officers the ability to then have a specific time daily, weekly.
Though sunset is on there, too.
It is.
Yeah.
But twilight is actually like when the sun is officially set, the stars are out, and it will be dark in the next twenty minutes.
Yeah.
I think, uh, Miranda, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially what we're trying to, as an action item, this is something that we would be approving tonight.
That is our request.
Okay.
So I kind of feel like we've discussed the times quite a lot, like this ordinance was before, first in the subcommittee, then it came to the Board of Trustees, then it went back to the subcommittee. And so it seems like there's been a lot of discussion around the, the times that it's open, so I'd be in favor of approving what we have here.
Okay. Any, uh, Tanya, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, I see both perspectives. I think the time is, I'm, I'm kind of lean more towards that. I think that's what is already here, so I just vote to approve what we have.
Then, uh, then it's your turn to make a motion.
Well, go around and see if anybody else has anything else to say.
Oh, no, we have to do public comment.
Uh, yes. Uh, Miranda, do you see anybody with a hand up right now?
No.
Come on, public.
Uh, anybody?
Uh, Jesse Ansari.
Yeah, true. Just, just a quick, quick, quick comment. Yeah, Jesse Ansari, resident of town in Netherland. Um, yeah, just to say that I think it would just be useful for the P D. To have some kind of tool to be able to talk to residents about what behavior is appropriate and not appropriate for our parks. And, um, just to have that instead of, you know, they may not necessarily be so strict about particular times if somebody wants to go for a five A M. Run in the middle of winter. I'm, I'm quite sure that would be acceptable to them, but it, it's just, I think it's going to be very helpful for them to be able to divert their attentions to the behaviors that are maybe not so acceptable and have some kind of backbone and framework to work within. So, um, yeah, thank you to the P D. For working so hard on this issue. That's all. Thank you.
Request to speak.
Ron, speak.
Uh, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I saw a provision there that allowed the administrator to make additional rules without any vetting. What would this entail and why would you have that provision after you've gone through so many iterations of designing rules? Uh, I'm not sure why. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess one thing I could think of this is, is there was a time that Chapeeta Park was used for our powwow. There was another time Gercio Ballfield for multiple years was used as a circus. Generally, we're not going to have elephants, hippos, as big circus tents, you know, in our parks. So there's no provisions in here for acceptable use for those things. However, uh, I could see some of those things happening again. So in the extent that we had a special event in the parks.
This is going to get dropped off really early, but you, I won't wake you up. Yeah.
I was just curious. That was my thought. So I'd like to hear from Miranda as well.
Yeah, and, and so actually in that section of code, that eleven one oh two, it talks about the different reasons why I, that the town administrator choose to do so. Some examples here are preservation of property, vegetation, wildlife. Um, if there's any sort of maintenance that's needed for necessary sanitation, health, safety, I'm just reading a couple. Um, concerns about camping or picnicking, operating in boats and vehicles, those types of things. And, and I do want to note that one of the changes we made is that if the town administrator were to adopt any sort of rule or regulation at the next board meeting has to come before the B O T. And the B O T. Can choose to deny, amend, uh, or continue forward with the town administrator's recommendation.
Thank you.
Miranda, um, how would it come before us? Would it come, but would it be a notification thing as part of a consent agenda?
No, I mean, it would become an, I, an action item that would need to come before you, um, for me to explain why or the town administrator, why they chose to make that ruling.
Okay.
Um, you know, I would never make a ruling without the guidance of the Parks manager and our town marshal. If there was something that they felt like needed to be in place, uh, to ensure, uh, the, the health, safety, sanitation, upkeep of those areas, um, I would definitely need to seek that guidance before making any sort of determination.
Great. Okay. Um, does anybody else want to speak from the public?
Uh, Kathleen had raised her hand.
Great.
I believe she's on the phone.
Kathleen, are you on?
Okay, Kathleen Chibai, um, I had the same concern Ron had. Um, and I, I'm not clear on why we keep bringing up camping. Camping is illegal on the town property. So I don't know why we keep thinking it's not, but, um, but I do have concerns with the town administrator. I appreciate, uh, Miranda's explanation. Uh, saying it'll come before the board immediately if it were to occur, but, um, I think that whole section of the language doesn't really need to be in there. Thank you.
Keep that, Kathleen. Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Last call. Eric, did you have something to say?
If public comment's done.
Public comment is done. Okay. Um, do I, uh?
Well, one of the, one of the things was, you know, I mean, I also had concerns about giving town administrator that kind of authority, but I think that with the provision that it must be presented to the B O T. Immediately, uh, it wouldn't last for very long, and it allows for if there is an emergency situation where a bank collapses or something like that, we need to close certain areas of the park or a new rule needs to be formed. Then we have a mechanism for doing that, uh, and it is enumerated here, the reasons why that's allowed to happen. Uh, it's not, it can't be arbitrary. So I feel pretty comfortable with, with the language that is in there. And one of the things that happened was that, you know, a lot of the rules that we started with, uh, from, that we got from, from the county and from other places, uh, we decided to not include in here because we didn't think that they were, if, we felt that it was over legislating for issues that don't really exist in Netherland. If those issues were to come about, however, and a rule did need to be put in place, we wanted a mechanism in order for that to happen without having to pass a whole new ordinance, right? Because that would be a lengthy, really difficult process. So to me, this was the best balance uh, of those two concerns.
I remember that discussion. Thanks for bringing it up then.
And I do have to say, from what, uh, Jesse Ansari said about, uh, discretion that can be used by our, uh, peace officers and our, and our, uh, park staff, that something that allows them to make a bit more discretion, have a bit more discretion, uh, in the way that they enforce park rules is a sunset to sunrise rather than a, a hard time that people need to be out of the park. I really don't think it's the right way to go. Um, I am against that very firmly.
We hear you. Good. Um, any other comment from the, or, or questions, thoughts from, from the board? Then is it, uh, do I hear a motion?
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion. I move to approve ordinance eight twenty seven parks regulations.
Second? Can we call the vote?
Trustee Combs Ismail?
Nope.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mahold?
Yes.
And trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion. Okay, that carries. Uh, we move, um, on into discussion items. Next, uh, public comment can be given for each discussion item. But let's, uh, let's start with ten one, keeping, the keeping animals ordinance. Uh, Miranda?
So it's actually going to be Cynthia here to
Oh, that's right.
Good evening.
Hey, Cynthia.
The first time I've been in a public person meeting since the pandemic, so it's nice to see everyone. Thank you. So, uh, we have Roger who's here, uh, Roger Cornell. He's a planning commissioner and a board of zoning adjustment, uh, alternate, and also Billy Giblin is online. He is, uh, one of our subcommittee members along with myself and Miranda Fisher. We started meeting in May sixteenth. Uh, we had a bit of a slow start. We had some people on vacation. I went and broke my wrist at the end of April, so uh, we started a little slow, but, um, as I note in the slide presentation, there's three main sections in our code where we are talking in chapter sixteen about animals. So in the definitions, in the agricultural aspect of the use groups, section sixteen thirty-two and section sixteen dash ninety-seven chicken hens. There's a few other mentions, but those are the main three. Uh, in definitions, we have direct mentions of animals. Uh, definition, animal hospital, kennel, private horse stables and public horse stables. There are other areas that could pertain in the zoning chapter to animals, fencing, vision clearance, things like that. But in terms of direct mentions, this is what we're looking at is in the definitions and also in the use groups, animal production is allowed via special review use in the residential districts. It's not allowed in any other district. Private horse stables are allowed by special review use in the mountain residential district only. Public horse stables are allowed via S R U. In the general commercial and public zones only, and outdoor kennels are prohibited in all districts. Uh, fish hatcheries, we don't have any of those, but that's allowed by special review use in the industrial and public zones. Anything in the public zone has to be publicly owned. And there are commercial uses, a whole grab bag, but a couple of them, animal hospitals and enclosed kennels, they are allowed by special review use in the general commercial, neighborhood, commercial and central business district zones. And, uh, under seventeen, excuse me, sixteen seventy-six, A nine B, home occupations. There's one mention of animal hospital. It's prohibited. You cannot do that as a business from home. And then way out in the zoning chapter, you have chicken hens. First time I looked over the zoning chapter, I know it's there and I even overlooked it. So, uh, chicken hens are an accessory use in the residential, all zone districts. Chicken hens are permitted as pet animals if the regulations are met. And the code looks at safety, ventilation, accessibility, sanitation, maintenance, reduction of associated nuisances. And this is all by the size and design and location of the chicken house. Roosters are prohibited, and so is breeding, selling or trading chicken hens or offspring as a commercial enterprise. So that's kind of it for the zoning chapter, and that's what we were tasked with by the board direction was to look at it from a zoning chapter. So we talked about that stuff. And under that, with the nominal mentions in the zoning chapter, we wanted to determine definitions for animal production, seeing as we do not have a definition for it, but it could be a something that's allowed by special review use, a production animal, livestock, poultry, however we name it, specific to Netherland, include types of animals allowed, and then separate out the different types of poultry from livestock. And moving the chicken hen code to chapter seven with other animal regulations, because most people are not going to be looking for it in the zoning chapter. The spreadsheet that I had accompanied, uh, this topic with, most of those regulations were taken from generally chapter sevens across the land of Colorado, as they have adopted similar codes with the same, uh, oftentimes the same chapters in the same places. So part of our subcommittee suggestions, if we are allowed to continue and look at chapter seven, would be looking at definitions in chapter seven to be tailored specifically to the animals that are allowed to be kept in Netherland to avoid ambiguity. Ambiguity is what got us all here. This is where all the letters started, is there was ambiguity about goats. And as we didn't have anything looking up to the state statutes, it is allowed. It's more permissive than perhaps Netherland wants to be, but, um, as we talked about this, allowed livestock animals. If we're allowed to continue, horses and llamas are already allowed. We talked about goats as there are some existing in the town. We did not talk about sizes of animals. We didn't get too deeply into this because we weren't sure of your direction. So we wanted to not overdig this whole, uh, allow poultry animals, chickens and ducks, looking at honey and non-honey producing bees. As I noted, mason bees a hundred and twenty times more, uh, effective than honeybees at pollination. It's important to consider pollinators, especially pollinators that are not going to bring bears, which are a problem for those who do have honey, uh, and who are trying to have hives up here. And then looking at the animal products that could be produced, eggs, milk and honey. So intentionally, we do not want breeding and or slaughter. So obviously, you know, if you lose a chicken, that may be chicken dinner, but, um, not an operation that would be something that would go on on a regular basis. Continuing those suggestions, we would want to consider appropriate yard sizes for humane keeping of animals, consider the protection aspects to avoid wildlife predation, bring in subject matter experts. I did talk to Abby and Adam from the feed store last weekend, and they said they would be willing to join us and lend their expertise to these conversations. Also soliciting public feedback. That is huge. You guys are seeing lots of letters uh, to the board and the planning commission, and they've been pretty steady through these months. So, um, getting that public feedback and helping guide the regulations, creating regulations that would be consistent, clear, easy to find for folks could be adapted as needed in the future and ensure humane, you know, humane keeping for animals and also honor the desire for sustainability in the town. So that's kind of a, uh, fast and furious view of it and what we were looking at. And, uh, if Roger and or Billy, Roger who is here and or Billy wants to jump in and add anything, they are welcome to do so.
Um, this is Billy.
Go ahead.
Commission and B Z A. Um, I, Billy Giblin, I, um, yeah, Cynthia's done a great job really spearheading it and, and, um, you know, digging into how some other towns define things and delineate things around animals. Um, and really appreciate you getting Abby and Adam on board. We definitely realize we need subject matter experts to help, to guide us on this from, you know, if, if we go any farther in, into the chapter seven side, you know, that we need more expertise on animals, and we also want more animal, or definitely want more public input uh, to make sure, you know, a few things, you know, our ducks and chickens, the only poultry that we want to include, you know, in town or, or other other birds we're not thinking of that, that folks can help us, you know, can point out to us that we'd want to include in that. Um, and then both public and, and, uh, expertise on, on figuring out, you know, how much space animals would need and, um, and then, yeah, and then also the flip side of, of the last, the last point Cynthia made about, uh, sustainability, you know, and, and with food scarcity, food prices and, 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 um, you know, w- what exactly is reasonable in the town for folks that might also want, you know, that are looking at animal production in different ways. Um, in general, you know, we leaned against, you know, thinking just for health and sanitation reasons that slaughter would be something we, you know, would, would let, you know, we, we, you know, at least as we talked in this preliminary way that we wouldn't allow, but, but, you know, again, between subject matter experts and and the public, you know, it might be something in there that, that would be allowed depending on what people want. So thanks for all your work, Cynthia.
Thanks, Billy.
Thank you, Billy. Roger?
Very briefly, Roger Cornell, nine nine eight, Peak to Peak Highway, Sedona. Um, I just want to emphasize that be- because we were charged with chap- chapter sixteen, so a lot of the conversation you just heard is that we ended up kind of having conversations, brainstorming about what if, and it, it really, uh, livestock and agriculture zones are truly chapter sixteen zoning, and overall, this is a zoning issue because it's a land use issue. We very quickly get into, uh, health, sanitation and animals. Our code is basically pets. So when we got into the idea of livestock, um, you know, we were kind of at a catch twenty-two. So we did have many discussions. Well, we, we just met, you know, the three times, but a lot of this just discussion, what we really need is to be able to take all those ideas and melt, uh, sixteen and seven together so we can can actually give the town the way, if anybody, I'm sure you have read the horse and llama ordinance and the chicken ordinance, you have an ordinance is very, very clear. The public can read it. They know exactly what to do. Staff can do it. They know exactly how to legislate it. So all the issues when it comes to animal production, SRU, what is whatnot, we just need a very clear regulation and this group can do that. But we actually have to meld chapter 17 and 16 together and able to give a good comprehensive ordinance that the town can use.
Quick question, Roger. What's your timeframe? When do you expect to have the work done?
Okay, fair enough.
I don't know. I think this committee is ready, willing and able. My personally, myself, I would meet this week and the Zoom works so we're able to do that. So I, I would hope that we, if you'd even allow, I'm interested in your discussion. As I spoke, I feel a lot of it's is zoning. If we could actually come up with, now this is totally me, we've never run this by anybody, some drafts ideas that we could bring to the planning commission at our next month. This is totally me. This is not anything we've talked about. An idea that I was going to bring to the group would be to be able to bring a draft to the planning commission that they could review, comment on, give ideas and, you know, maybe be able to have give feedback by, so that July, by, you know, the August board meeting that we could have that. Is that realistic? I mean...
Doesn't have to be realistic.
The biggest, the biggest thing would be the idea that actually empower us to actually take it to the planning commission because that would be not only the committee, now you're empowering the planning commission to, you know, look at things for chapter 17.
Yeah. You're also starting to open it up to the public for comment by bringing it to the planning commission first. That's how we can start to get the public involved.
Let's just see where it goes, but that would be, whether it's next month, whatever, but to have a draft and have, because it is a planning issue, to have the planning actually give feedback, I think would be good. When it happens, I shouldn't actually do a deadline.
Good.
But that would be that idea to actually have, that's a cross section of this town.
Yep.
Citizens to actually get some feedback.
And I do think there's a sense of urgency from a lot of the community members who would like to see that the board of trustees or just the town as a whole takes some more serious action here. There is concern and so kind of giving us that green line and with these recommendations Cynthia provided, it helps us know what direction to go. And then we're not spinning our wheels. We know we can start to gain really specific feedback on what Cynthia's outlined in this presentation.
Billy, what's your plan, group's plan for public outreach? What's your mechanism?
Well, I think, you know, initially bringing in those subject matter experts, you know, bringing in Abby and Adam specifically and talking with them and getting ideas from them about people specifically we want to target in the neighborhood and in town, not the neighborhood, in town. And also just by having them as the publicly posted meetings like the planning commission, then it would, you know, be open to the public. There's definitely a lot of letters we've been seeing, you've been seeing, you know, want us to have made this decision already. And those to me are just by bringing it into those public forums, that's one way to do it. As for like other, I don't, we haven't talked specifically about other ways to reach out to the public, maybe more proactively or more actively, which I think is something we should discuss, how to actually get out there and seek public comment so we can get more of it quicker. But we know there's the sides of, you know, we know people want animals. We also know people don't want animals. We know that there needs to be, you know, animals need to have a good reality, need to be raised well. And also, you know, people need some freedom to have some food, way to produce their own foods. So we know all those things are at work, but we need to know how many, you know, we need to have more ways to get out there and find out exactly who wants what to help us.
Okay. But I want, do you have anybody from the board first? We'll come back.
Yeah, I guess I'll talk. So this came before the planning commission on March 30th and we did have a lot of public input at that time. I looked at the, all the material in the packet, there was a proposal, a start of a proposal based on Boulder County regulations. I also looked at the regulations in Lyons, Denver, Golden and the city of Boulder. The Boulder County and the city of Boulder both require a half acre per goat. There are some other municipalities that allow a smaller property size for dwarf goats. I think, but I think our concern should be on the full size goats. I'd like to see the committee implement regulations that would support a policy of health, safety and welfare of humans and animals. And also implement, put together regulations that would reduce the impact on neighbors as far as noise and odor are concerned. The, I'd also like the subcommittee to take a look at working dogs and allowing those dogs to bark at night. I, I, I think that the typically people put their livestock into well-contained spaces at night because there are a lot of wildlife out there. There's raccoons and, you know, I've had chickens and they are put in their coop at night. But I know even in my neighborhood of Big Springs with the one acre lots, a dog barking at night would keep me up because we don't hear dogs barking at night. So, so I'd like to see the regulations around working dogs looked at. And then the other thing is, you know, I was thinking of how this compares to short-term regulations where when we did put in place short-term regulations, we applied those regulations to pre-existing conditions. So I would be in favor of applying any new regulations for livestock that currently is not, that we don't have regulations for in the municipal code. I would like to see those enforced on existing conditions. And then I'm also encouraging the subcommittee to do this quickly, but take your time to get some good regulations in place. So I know that's hard to do, but it sounds like you have some good momentum going and some people willing to put in time on it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks Karen. You want to say anything Eric?
Yeah. I mean, first, I just want to make sure, I like, while I recognize that a specific issue is the reason why this is before us now. But as we find with many aspects of Netherlands code, it is a specific incident that leads us to the understanding that generally our code doesn't necessarily work with, in the way that it was intended to. So regardless of whatever the intentions were of the folks who put this code in place, the code has to be enforced as written. And the way that it's written makes it very challenging to enforce these regulations. So we need to clarify that so they can be enforced. Or even whether or not it is regulated, right? It's not clear that it's actually regulated in town code. So I know that a lot of folks, especially in the neighborhood, believe that that is not the case, but in my reading and my understanding of the way that the code is currently written, town staff is acting appropriately in this particular matter that brings this situation before us. That being said, I really hope that we think more broadly and just in general, rather than think about a specific situation or incident and that we apply a code that works for the whole town of Netherlands rather than just this one neighborhood and this one piece of property. I think that will be better for everybody. If I want to start keeping bees, I want to know how many bees I can keep, right? That's helpful for me as a beekeeper, right? If I want to keep chickens, same, same goes, same goes for any other animal. It's helpful to know what is appropriate, what the right size is, what my neighborhood can withstand and what it cannot. So I think it helps everybody in this situation and I really don't want anything to be construed as being punitive toward any single party and the way that we are going to approach this. So that's, just wanted to make sure that that's said out loud because I think that that's really important here. We're trying to help every resident in this circumstance by amending town code. And then the other thing that I would say about these recommendations the planning commission has put forward is awesome job. Absolutely love it. I think this is the direction that we should be going in and we should be using subject matter experts because fundamentally, we're a very, very small town and I, and I don't think that democracy always means majority rule, right? And I know that people move here and buy property here for the specific purpose of living more sustainably, living within the means of what they're able to grow and the animals that they're able to raise. And I think that that's an important part of Netherlands culture and heritage and history. And I think that we need to preserve that while also making sure that everybody is safe. And then the last thing that I was going to say is that I think there are two slightly separate issues here. The, the noise component, right, of keeping animals is addressed separately in the chapter on noise right now, right? The problem is it is vague and difficult to enforce because nobody knows what constitutes any of the language that is in there, right? So Marshall Fine Lovin cannot say what frequent means, right? Or what annoyance or disturbance entails, right? At what point is a dog sparking frequent? At what point is a dog sparking annoying? And who gets to determine that? Just the person who is annoyed? Well, then we're in a pickle, right? Because then anybody can just say, I'm annoyed and you have to enforce it. So I do think that we also need to address the noise ordinance of 2011 that had, that put that vague language in there. And Marshall Fine Lovin has some great language from BC SO, Boulder County Sheriff's Office that says explicitly what constitutes a violation of the, of code when it comes to noise relating to dogs and animals that make sounds. So I think that addressing those two things simultaneously is something we need to do because I do think this is an urgent matter because of the issues that people are currently facing. And the faster that we can get those things done so we know what it means, I think will be very, very helpful.
Can I, can I just throw in something there about, I believe working dogs are an exemption to the noise.
They're not exempted.
Okay.
They're not exempted in the noise, in the chapter on noise. There is no exemption for working dogs. There's no even term working dogs in our code. So we're using a lot of terms, a lot of terms are being thrown around, illegal, working dogs, feedlots, livestock. None of this stuff is in our code, right? So we need to come up with some definitions here so that we can actually talk about this in a meaningful way. Otherwise, we're all just making up our own language and deciding what is or is not legal, which is no way to run a town, right?
Good. And Bill, some of the board before we go to public comment, Jonathan?
I was just, oh, you want to go first Tanya?
Oh, it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
I was just going to say fundamentally, I agree with everything trustee Combs and Mel just said. I would love to see we take Roger's recommendation that we kick this back to the subcommittee that have been doing a very effective job so far and that we get a draft. I would speak to the fact that I would love the idea of addressing the noise ordinance as far back as the S, the short-term rentals. This was an issue that we were trying to address things in the short-term rental ordinance that are addressed in other nuisance ordinance, that we don't have to specifically tailor every ordinance we make in the town of Netherlands to address the noise, this, this and that, that we simply understand it's addressed somewhere else in code. Lastly, when it comes to the term working dogs, I would really want to move away from that. I have a working dog and the idea that you can stop a dog from barking in the middle of the night short of a shock collar if there's a moose or a raccoon outside your house is kind of absurd. So just going to say that publicly.
Well, I just jumped in there. I was thinking of dogs barking outside, not inside.
Okay. Tanya?
Uh, yeah, I also agree with everything. I'm glad this is being done. I think the more specific we can get with everything in our code, the better so that we don't have all these long conversations. We need to define excessive noise. We need to limit and regulate the animals that we are allowing outside and ones that are pets. And I am, I was a little confused because yeah, the person who wrote the letter about the working dog made it sound like the police could do nothing to stop this dog from barking all night. And this person's mentioned this many times. So I'm wondering where she's getting this information if it doesn't even exist. Is, are the police telling her that? Like, I mean, if a dog's barking all night and it's keeping you up, that should, that should constitute excessive noise or any, you know, it shouldn't even be like a, it's a no-brainer and you would hope that our code, that's what it's for. So it's unfortunate that all the codes that we have already in place are doing nothing to prevent this particular person from having dogs barking all night and the trash and the feces and the millions, not millions, several different code violations that are being written in these letters. And so I guess I'm reading these letters and assuming these things are true and I'm driven by, but I don't know per se if there are actual code violations on this property. And if they're not, then we really should rewrite our codes because there should, there should be some violations here. That one neighbor should not have the right to disturb the peace and the smell of a whole neighborhood. So yeah, I'm all for this project. I hope you can get as specific as possible with everything while still allowing people to have goats and bees and whatnot and chickens because they can be done responsibly. I've seen, most people do it responsibly. It's just, you know, this is, this one case has brought this to our attention. So here we are and my question is, in the future, or is it currently the case when somebody says they're going to have, say, a chicken coop, does it get inspected by Safe Belt? Or how does it get determined that it's built in a way that will keep predators from, you know, having free food all night?
So there are some, when it comes to the regulations on chicken coops, there's actually our code enforcement can go out and ensure that it meets all of the parameters of that section of code. I mean, we've asked him to do so before, just to, before we even sign off and issue that permit.
Right. So I would hope that with this, if we're going to bother with all this, that the same would apply before you can have goats, your goat shelter needs should be approved, that it's bear proof and all that so that you don't have a dog out patrolling all night and that they're safe. That way it keeps the predators down for everybody else who wants to be outside at night. But thank you guys for taking this on. I'm assuming that there isn't anything the neighbors can do regarding this potential, this particular person until we rewrite the code. Cause it sounds like if there were something that could have been done, it would have been done. Is that correct?
Yes, I think the one thing that the board of trustees could do if there was a desire to direct town staff is to do a moratorium on all animals that are not currently allowed within, or that are currently listed within code, which is horses, llamas.
Ah, so.
Absolutely not.
We could do something.
Or you just do a moratorium on goats or you could choose to do a moratorium on all animals that are not listed in, in code, which has been one thing that's been discussed that perhaps the intention of the board back then, when they put that into code was that that was all, those were the only three types of animals they wanted. So if you wanted to keep it to that, then the moratorium.
Well, then they shouldn't have written and other domestic animals if that's.
Yeah, so vague. Yeah.
It's very clearly written there. Yeah, I would be absolutely, fundamentally, absolutely against a moratorium that would target specific property owners in our community. I think that that is, that is completely an unacceptable path for the board to take.
So back to the dogs working issue, there is an exception to the barking dogs or other disturbances for dogs working livestock.
But that is in a different chapter than the noise chapter.
Well, it's, but this is.
And it only says this article, the exemptions only apply to this article, not to this code, to this article. And so if you go to the noise code, it specifically calls out animals and does not exempt working dogs.
Okay, I think Miranda, is our police department treating dogs that are working differently than other dogs as far as barking is concerned?
Well, I can actually say I had a long conversation with Marshall Fine Lovin about this very thing. So the problem with the noise code is its enforceability, right? It is there, the intention is clear, but it's difficult to determine whether or not a dog is barking all night long, how many people are reporting that, who's reporting that, if their immediate neighbors are not. Like it's, it's basically impossible. Like, it's, it's basically impossible, as far as I understand it, for our staff of the town to enforce the code in the way that it's written because there are no explicit definitions for what constitutes a disturbance.
So my understanding was that she, Sergeant Fine Lovin was treating dogs that were working livestock and barking at predators differently than dogs that were barking at other things, non, non-dogs that weren't working livestock. And so, yes, yes, difficult. So I think we need to.
My last conversation with, with our, with our marshal was on Sunday, two days ago. So as, as of then, I'm pretty sure town staff are fully aware that there are multiple ways that animals are discussed in town code. Neither of them constitute an effective enforcement mechanism. And that's really the issue, I think. And I'm sympathetic to that. I'm sympathetic to the idea that, you know, one can't just point a finger at someone and say, this is happening. It may well be, but we need to know what actually defines that that has occurred so that when a warning is issued or a citation is issued, it is just. I mean, otherwise, we're in a delicate, delicate situation, I think.
Tanya, do you have the last word?
Oh, I don't wanna have the last word, but I mean, I've had a neighbor whose dogs barked all night long. Finally, they moved away and that was our blessing. And then they moved to another neighborhood and I kept hearing about that neighborhood was crying all the time about it. And so, yeah, we need to clarify what would that be? I mean, a dog that barks for five minutes, oh, you know, is not a problem. A dog that barks for five minutes every 10 minutes is a problem. So that, I guess is, are we putting this also in the hands of this committee or is this a whole nother committee? Because I think it needs to be addressed. It's part of it.
I think personally, I think it's a separate issue, Tanya. I think it's in a different, it's a different part of code. It's about noise. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I, I, I guess we'll talk about this another time, but I, it's sad for me to think that there'd be nothing I could do about this dog barking all night long. I'd call the police and they'd say, I can't enforce it. And then I'm just like, what is the point of having these rules then, you know? So.
Think we need to fix it.
Can I make a, I gotta just ask a question based on specifically what Tanya just said? I mean, one thing we were thinking and it kind of Cynthia spelled it out and Roger said it, is trying to roll this stuff into one place so people can just go to one place and more simply discern animal regulation than animal production, you know, chapter 16 stuff, chapter seven stuff. But I do wonder, because this whole working dog thing, specifically a dog that was out with the goats all night barking, was kind of something I hadn't thought about since I don't live in that part of town and haven't heard it. But I wonder if, if indeed, specific noise, specific to working dogs and animals and keeping animals, keeping animals, whether it should also go in the same place or whether you guys prefer it's, it, it doesn't. That's all, that's my question.
I, I think Eric Cooms Esmal has a proposal that we could maybe work with.
Yeah, I, I think that we should, I think we should make it separate and I think it should be in, in line with, basically, I think we should consult our PD on how they think they could best enforce the intention of the noise code as it relates to animals. And look at that and decide on whether or not we wanna pass it and put it into the noise, noise code.
Can you consider, continue your Sunday discussion then?
Indeed.
I'm sure there's, there's code that works very well.
Yeah, I can bring it forward as a discussion item soon. It's quite short and sweet. It's nothing complicated, but it's, I think it would be very helpful for, for PD.
As long as it is compatible with the code that we currently have, or we modify the code that we currently have to make it compatible.
Good. Public comment?
Kathleen Chibai has her hand up and you have two people in the room.
Okay.
So I don't know where you wanna start.
Kathleen, you wanna go first?
Sure. Kathleen Chibai, 31-year resident at East Magnolia, 18, 19-year business owner. So number one, I want a, a positive note. I agree that the hen's section should be moved to chapter seven. Simple as that. My second is a question that I'm hoping to have resolved is, was the goat problem resolved? Or is that still ongoing? Were the goats removed? I mean, what is, can anyone tell me, is the, is the goat problem resolved?
Uh, no.
So the, the property does, that, that is a part of this discussion, does have goats. They had historically had goats that were removed from the property and then they have brought back new goats.
Okay, okay. So, and I guess my biggest concern is that there's a, still a continued misunderstanding of how our democratic republic works. The code is not written to give you permissions. And when I look through the packet, it says that the, the subcommittee wants to focus on writing specifically what is allowed in town. And that's not how this country, this free country works. Codes and laws is what limits you. If it's not in the code and the law, it is lawful. Currently, it says domestic animals, that can be any animal. I get concerned when I hear Karen calling dogs livestock. I agree with Eric, all these terms being thrown around is frightening. Working dogs, none of this is in our code. We're talking about it as if it's an accepted definition for all these words. I don't know, if a working dog is working livestock, I'm unaware of any livestock being raised in the town of Netherlands. So you don't get to write rules that apply to people who already have things. And we learned that with the frozen dead guy ordeal. The guy was dead, we had two other dead bodies. It went to court, the town took him to court and the town lost, okay? He's grandfathered in because you cannot, it, it is not lawful to write language to target individual people or individual. Well, that's what these individual situations are, are. The people with the goats, okay? Now, they can argue that those are domesticated pets if they're taking them in their house and the whatnot. I don't understand what the problem is. But when, when we list, how are you guys gonna list every animal that's allowed? I mean, I, I'm concerned because one of the people that, I'm concerned because it's the town administrator on this subcommittee. It's somebody who's running for mayor. It's someone who has been on ProSAB and other boards for decades. And it's somebody working at Town Hall. And the proposal is, we're gonna write something that allows animals. It's completely backwards. And I just wish we can wrap our heads around that the code is for limitations. And if there's no real concern about any other animal, I mean, I don't understand how you're gonna create a list to say what's allowed. Because it could, I mean, we can have an ant farm, okay? Or if it's not in the code, it's illegal. This mentality that if it's not in the code is illegal is 180 degrees. It's Orwellian. If it's not in the code, it's legal. If it's, it's a birthright, okay? Let me see. And the sound permit, I'm, I'm curious as to why the decibel level for, on sound that's currently in the code, that if people wanna have an event or something and they need, they wanna go sound above that limit, they apply for a permit. There's a decibel level. How is there not a decibel measurer owned by the police department? And they can just go when they're called, if there's a dog barking, to go out there and see if it, how loud it is. And, and maybe what it need, the decibel level at night might need to change to, maybe say after 11:00 or 12:00 PM or something for dogs. But I don't understand why we keep saying nothing can be enforced. I can't believe a barking dog all night long cannot be enforced by law enforcement. That, I don't even believe that that's a correct reading of the code. And I'm also concerned about the urgency. I don't understand what the urgency is. Some, Miranda mentioned urgency. I'm, I'm not sure, what is the urgency? We, it sounds to me like we have two, maybe three independent situations. One is with goats. Nobody's trying to have a feedlot, that's for sure. Nobody's got livestock. So that's what, all I wanna say. Let's, let's remember that this is a democratic republic and if it's not regulated in the code, it is lawful. And I hope we don't go about writing new language that says, this is allowed, this is allowed, this is allowed. And if it, if we didn't list it, it's not allowed because that's backwards and just, it's not how things work. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Uh, who else wants to speak tonight? Come on up. And let us know who you are.
My name is Casey Clifford and my husband Miles and I own the property at 45 West Third Street. And I had kind of a long list of things to bring up and you guys really covered them all really well. And what I, the note I ended up making was to encourage you to allow the special, encourage you guys to allow the committee to continue. I, I think that we've all identified the hole, that there are holes in the code. The word ambiguity has come up a lot. The word urgency is apt. It's urgent because there is a situation that's causing people to not sleep at night. It's distressing us when the goats are on our property because our property is adjacent to the property that has the goats and their property is so small, it's actually smaller than what you're allowed to build on. It's smaller than 8,000 square feet. But yet they have goats on it. And I just, one, the one thing that I do disagree with that I wanna, Miranda, you mentioned the word that these guys have had goats historically. And I don't know how you define historically, but Miles can tell you the date the goats showed up and it was less than a year ago. So when I think historically, I think of something that happened in 1973 or, so I just wanna point that out. But I wanna encourage you guys to allow them to continue. I think everybody in this room is very much on the same page as far as needing to flesh these things out for the sake of, you know, a decent existence for everyone in town. I don't think anybody wants to take away anybody's rights. We just wanna be responsible about how things are done. And I think that is the, that's what codes are intended to do. And I think this one intended to do it, it's just has huge holes in it. I really appreciate Karen, how tangible your list was as far as what needs to be addressed, what needs to be flushed out. And I think that a challenge for, I appreciate Cynthia that your committee wants to include public input. And I think a challenge the committee's up against is identifying those specific needs. And, and I think Miranda pointed out, you know, this, there is an issue of urgency, but we also need to be thorough and responsible in how this is done. And I think that's what you guys wanna do. And I hope that you can continue and I'd love to participate. And yeah, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, thank you very much. Does anybody else wanna speak tonight? Come on up.
I would like to.
Oh, one second, Ron. You'll be next. We got a speaker here and right in front of you.
I'm Miles Le Hugh, Casey's husband. We own the property, just right next to 5 West Third Street. I, I've been a part of this community also, been on the Sugarloaf Fire Department for a long time. Was on the, I was on the board for eight years. And I'm only mentioning that solely because I understand that, that the easiest ways about this is to make all, both sides happy. I don't think this is one of those. I really think this is one of these things where we need, we need, you know, I'd love to, I know this isn't about influencing the subcommittee. I understand that, I think we're all on board. I think we're on board that, that continuing the subcommittee and, and getting a draft of the rules is, I think we all agree with that. I would love to try and influence a subcommittee when it comes time. But what I want, what, a big concern of mine is, is this notion of grandfathering, these people that haven't had their goats for even a year. We're really, really worried about this because, you know, I mean, I think if I were to come up with some buffaloes or something that was crazier here, something that had a really strong danger here, this wouldn't be a grandfathered thing. You know, I understand that no one lives right next door here or anything, but this is crazy. This isn't a little, these aren't goats that are just, you know, travel, you know, traveling through the, you know, the tulip, the tulips here. This is, this is, has all the definitions of what a feedlot is. It's dusty, they've made illegal berms, there's, they cut down all the trees there. You guys, this is devoid of vegetation. And it's not, I'm an architect. And, and one thing this, this, this whole situation has, has really produced is, is really a, 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 a planning or a zoning problem. And the fact this isn't part of the neighborhood's character. I'm not talking about the, the color of their, of their house. I'm talking about a lot of goats that have eaten every last little bit of vegetation there with dust. And you, everyone has already talked about the noise and, and, you know, and we'll have the water issues and all that that are much bigger than Netherlands. And this isn't a little thing. If they want to have raised five goats, they should have gotten a much larger property. It's not fair to the goats either. And, and this isn't about, I don't really feel like this is about rights and all that stuff. We've, we're all living together, where there's all rules. I think you guys understand that. I'm not trying to limit the diversity of Netherlands or their workiness or anything. I just want this place to really just seem like a neighborhood that I wanna live in. And, and it's not that way. It's a tiny lot, it's not, it's not even an eighth of an acre. And you will not find any municipality that, that offered, that allows goats saying that an eighth of an acre is even close to the adequate amount of land for virtually any animal of this size. And the last thing, and to keep these goats, you need, you know, during the planning, whatever we were at a month ago or whatever, you know, they wanted permission to build a taller fence. They, they said it was for privacy. We all know it wasn't for privacy. We all know it was simply, because it's hard as hell to keep goats in. They, you know, they withdrew their, their whatever, their request. But just go drive by. It's not hard to see. These people had a fixer-upper, pretended it wasn't that and, and didn't really feel like the rules applied to them. And now we're here having to spend all this time. I'm obviously a rookie because I've been here since seven. And, and I just, I, uh, next time I'll come more at the nine o'clock time. But I have learned that hopefully in the end, well, we can have a good set of rules and all that, so. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Miles. I, I do, I do walk the neighborhood too.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
Miles and Casey, do you actually reside at 45 West Third Street?
No, but we are certainly trying to get our permit through.
Okay.
Everybody else knows.
So that property is 3,984 square feet. And just for clarification, the property in question is 7,000, what, it was at 922. So it is actually only 80 square feet below the building, so just.
But it is, we still would have to go through the same problems.
Understood.
We, we can have an argument about that, but it's.
Just would like the clarification.
Thanks. Thanks. Good. Rod Mitchell?
Um, I understand the issues here. And I had some of my own a few years back. And I have an agriculture experiment in town in a residential zone where I'm growing hops and grapes. And both of those crops attract pests called aphids. And there's a fowl, which is a little, excuse me. One minute, please. Can't remember name of the little fowl. It's, it's a very small, it's not a chicken. And I'll think of it in a minute. But nevertheless, it was noted by a neighbor that this was not in the code and we got into a big battle about, because I had those there, it, that particular fowl. It, uh, that particular fowl uh, likes aphids. So as a counterbalance to that, and also one other way of controlling aphids is with ladybugs. But uh, the uh, a little fowl were able to uh, eat the bugs. But yet I received a lot of grief and ultimately just slaughtered them all because it was too much trouble fighting with a neighbor about these little tiny uh, chicken-like uh, animals. So I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of them right at this point, it's been a while back. But anyway, I would like to see that definition broad enough to include those things. And the other thing is, is that I think one of the things you need in this ordinance is a route of appeal. And I mention this often in terms of situations that arise uh, where people uh, have legitimate complaints about situations with their neighbors. And uh, the uh, appeal route seems to me to be avoided a lot or not considered. And I think that's one of the things that American jurisprudence is for. Uh, let people make their case and uh, and then make a decision. Uh, because that's public, that lets people have notice. And it provides an arena for the resolution of the problem uh, as opposed to uh, ultimatums that are imposed on people. So I think yes, this code needs a lot of work. And uh, I would hope that uh, the definition of uh, chickens only uh, becomes a fowl. And uh, thank you very much.
You want to join another committee, Ron?
Yes, I'd lo, I'd love to join the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment?
Do we have a KG?
Yep, that is me, Kim GoHo. Um, I just want to thank everyone, especially the subcommittee for your hard work and input tonight. Um, you definitely have your work cut out for you. Um, I just wanted to add a few things, um, and especially taking into Kathleen Chippai's comment that I understand is a governmental process, but I don't necessarily know that we need to get it perfect right now. I think that we need to improve the current ordinance um, based on feedback that, that you have all um, been given. And it will be revisited as needed. So I just want to make sure that that is something that we can at least attain to get better at, but understanding that maybe armadillos are going to be a thing in Netherlands in twenty years and we didn't put it in the code. Um, I do think as specific as possible in regards to the regulations, in terms of the amount of animals uh, or the number of animals by type per square feet. I don't know that it needs to be some algebraic equation, but I do think that we need to be really specific in town. And if I have a, a half an acre lot, who's to stop me from having twenty-four alpaca and a quote-unquote working dog all night long? I think that there needs to be some specifics in there. I also just want to just caution or maybe just give some encouragement to get away from subjective language as mentioned to, tonight. And really focus on the ethical and humane keeping of animals. And what does ethical and humane look like? And can we define that? And get away from, you know, like using words like frequent and disturbance and annoying like, that were mentioned from um, the board members tonight. And, and, and how can we quantify it or qualify it so that it is enforceable by the PD? Um, and also just wanted to make mention of, you know, there's um, some feedback of like sustainability. And I think that needs to be looked at through the lens of town limits and not what we hope that our town in general looks like. We're really specifically looking at the town limits um, um, issue here. So um, thank you for your time. And again, I appreciate your hard work, but let's hope and focus on the ethical and humane treatment of these animals. Because I do think there's an urgency factor involved in this particular incident that, or property that has been brought to your attention. And I, I agree that it needs to be addressed quickly.
Thanks KG, can you identify yourself? I didn't hear who you were.
I did, Kimberly GoHo.
Okay, great, that uh, that helps.
Are you a resident?
Yes, I am. Town limit.
Ron Mitchell again, I just identify that little animal, they're quail.
Oh yes. Thanksgiving uh, treat. Thanks Ron. I knew it would come to you eventually. Um, is there somebody else who wants to speak?
Um, this is Billy Giblin there, subcommittee member. I do appreciate specifically like, that's specific, that's exactly the kind of thing Ron just said that we were, that we want to keep it open for, for public comment. Like, we know there's other species of birds out there that should very well be allowed and be protected to be in town. And that seems like a really good one, that serves a useful purpose for, for people growing food. Um, and um, also I think the appeals idea makes sense because there may be weird situations. And like KG just said, you know, who knows what the future will bring. And um, this thing, you know, it won't be perfect, I'm sure of that. Um, but, but it'll be much better, we hopefully, and clearer. And um, and yeah, it, it, it may, it will be revisited, I'm sure over time. Or things will have to be appealed or looked at when they come that, that are unique and are issues we're dealing with at this point, so.
Thanks Billy.
Mr. Protem Mahol, do you want to make a motion to extend if the desire is to continue this meeting?
Yes, I'd make a motion to extend uh, to ten thirty uh, or as soon as we can get Jennifer Madsen on her way.
Second.
Call the vote.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yeah.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Trustee Kim Sizmile?
Yes.
Thank you.
We continue. Um, can we uh, wrap up a public comment on uh, nine dot four? Does anybody else need to speak?
I guess I would just be curious to bring in and encourage the, this subcommittee to reach out to the Holistic Institute down in Boulder. Um, the idea of holistic grazing is quite well outside the parameters of American understanding of space limits for certain animals, particularly having to do with hoofed animals. It's a different means of raising hoofed animals. High intensity grazing in contained, small density areas specifically to restore the vegetation, having to do with restoring root systems as well as increasing permitability. So I would just ask that we not only reach out to our owners of our local feed store, but maybe reach out to a nonprofit organization that is housed in Boulder that is known for having rehabilitated over four hundred thousand hect acres of African desert using hoofed animals. I would also like to point out that goats have been mentioned by the Sustainability Board as well as ProSab of the town actually purchasing to be used for noxious weed removal. I would also point out that a neighbor across from me, three ninety-nine West Third Street, currently comes down at least three times a week that I see him. That's when I'm around on the weekends, if not four times a week, to walk these goats and bring some down to his personal property to graze them. I would love to bring these goats to my personal property on Third Street to graze them. So that when the subcommittee is looking at these things, it maybe takes into account that as a community, if these owners are having problems with the neighbors, maybe we can all get together and figure out if it's about having the amount of vegetation. I could be pretty pissed if goats were coming and eating vegetation on my land. That is not appropriate. Now, there might be neighbors three, four houses down that would love to have those goats come eat their grass so they don't have to spend gas and diesel to mow it. We're a town that has crusher fine sidewalks, but we want to outlaw goats because there's not vegetation. I'm just a little bit having a conundrum with this. And I guess I would like to see more looking into not necessarily specific lot sizes defined as you can have this, but making sure that nutrients and care and health of the animals is taken care of. The idea that it has to be a half acre. Well, okay, let's say you have a half acre, but that half acre is uh, entirely lodgepole pine. Is that going to sustain a goat? No. What if you have a quarter acre, but it's the most lush, you know, garden and aspen grove area there is? Well, it's sustaining moose currently, so why can't it sustain goats? We need to be a little bit more thoughtful, especially concerning the sustainability goals we have. So that would be my perspective and my ask of the subcommittee is yes, let's define this. But let's bring in some actual experts from various different thoughts. We have an understanding of feedstock or, you know, uh, livestock raising that may not be entirely accurate in the United States.
Thank you, trustee Baumhofer. Anybody else?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. Go ahead Eric.
I just was going to say, I, I, I actually do completely agree with Jonathan on that. Um, and that I, I, I do tend towards uh, writing code that is a limitation rather than a permission. I do think that that is more appropriate. Um, uh, but I think that code can be written precisely enough to offer adequate limitations uh, that it doesn't need to give permission. So I, I would ask that the, that the planning commission pursue that philosophy uh, of designing uh, these regulations. Um, because I do think that we can achieve the same goals, but uh, I think in a better way that will down the line lead to less issues. Uh, like having to add animals to a code every few years because we realize that it's ridiculous that we have banned some tiny chicken, right? Like from, from, from being raised in Netherlands, right? From one of Ron's things, um, whatever they might be. So yeah, I do think that uh, it makes more sense to go the limitation route, but to be very precise in those limitations so that they uh, can address some of these concerns, but also to consider different, different regulations for different zones. And I think that's going to be really important.
Okay, Tanya?
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm, it's an interesting conversation, but I'm thinking about, you know, this particular house and how it would think that in much of our code about um, you know, like feces control and smells and inhumane um, captivities and all that would be able to be enforced. And it's not, so then I would want to revisit, you know, what some of these definitions we have in our code. Like if this were a property that had, you know, this lush aspen grove that Jonathan's um, describing and in a wonderful enclosure that was aesthetically and also functional and had proper removal and composting of the, the feces. And you know, done in a, a permaculture ideal sort of way, nobody would be here right now. We would, wouldn't even be having this conversation. So yeah, maybe instead of limiting the animals, it's more of the uh, the, the grounds and how they're kept should maybe become something that's better defined in code so that, you know, they, so that this doesn't come up again. So that, you know, you, you don't have dust, feces filled dust blowing into the neighbor's house.
Right.
Um, and so maybe that could be another focus. I, because I do agree, like you could have an acre and it could still be horrible. Or you could have a quarter acre and it could be amazing. Um, and that's a big conversation. Um, and those are things that need to be better defined because me, my vision of beauty is not your vision of beauty. And it's impossible to find, so. Good conversation. I mean, I thought we had all this in the code already, um, when this came up a few months ago. Uh, we have things about feces and smells coming from other properties. We have things about inhumane um, captivity and no, we have like no livestock and all that in the code. Um, but it's, apparently it's not enough. And so I appreciate everyone's work here. And again, to get as specific as possible and, you know, maybe not focus on the limitation, but on, you know, what the ideal image is going to be for this, for these houses that want to have um, these animals.
Thanks Tanya. Can we tie this one off or?
I do, I do have something to point out. Um, well, just two things quick. The first quick thing is just to say again, I really think that this conversation has to be about Netherlands in general, not this particular circumstance. I think that it's really inappropriate if it's about this particular circumstance. Um, it just cannot be. Uh, and on top of that, there are enforceable regulations, but they need to be proved to have been broken in order for them to be enforced, right? That is really important. It can't just be in one person's opinion, they must be proved through the appropriate process, which is through the police.
Good.
And last thing, sorry, is that we do have an appeals process in a way. In that we do have in uh, chapter seven of the code, uh, ascertain new nuisances, which is section seven dash four, right? Uh, where the town administrator may elect to investigate a situation and declare it a nuisance upon, and, and upon doing so, there are a whole other set of things that kick in once it actually is a nuisance. And there are things that can be enforced, right? But the town administrator would have to elect to do, to do that investigation and find that it is a nuisance uh, because it's dangerous to the health of any of the inhabitants of the town. So if that investigation were to take place, you can always, obviously you can petition anybody to do anything, right? As a, as a, as a resident, so you can ask, hey, will you investigate this? The town administrator can say no. The town administrator can say, we've investigated it and found that it is not a nuisance. That is in a way an appeals process.
Seven dot four?
Yeah, that's seven dash four, ascertain new nuisances, yes.
So now I suppose the board of trustees could direct the town administrator to investigate a situation.
Indeed we could.
Yeah. So if we're ready for the question before the board for this item, it is given limited mention regarding animals in chapter sixteen. Does the board want the subcommittee to further review chapter seven to make recommendations? Say yes.
Absolutely.
I agree. And Tanya?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're unanimous on this then. Thanks for coming folks.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you everybody.
I just wanted to end by saying that I know I work for town staff, but I took care of six goats. I did all the mucking, feeding, all that kind of stuff. I also took care of chickens and I had got my permaculture certificate in two thousand twelve. So I'm not just a town staff member, I'm also a goat.
Awesome. A goat mucker.
The goat.
Yeah.
Hey Jonathan, what's the name of that nonprofit in Boulder?
Holistic Institute.
Yeah, Holistic Institute. Or Savery Institute, I believe it's holistic grazing. Uh, Alan Savery.
Holistic, holistic institute and holistic grazing is really the.
Yeah, holistic grazing, Savery Institute.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks guys, take care.
Goodnight Cynthia. Attorney Madsen, we've made you go last. Apologies, you've got a long journey, how do you?
Oh, no worries at all. Um, so there's two matters before you tonight. There's um, the watershed ordinance and ten forty-one regulations. And these have been, both of these items have been before the board of trustees. Um, at least on one other occasion, maybe several. Um, and I think both of these can be lumped together in terms of, you know, generally speaking, giving the board of trustees authority over matters that you wouldn't typically have authority over. Um, so for first talking about the watershed ordinance, that would be on um, really expanding the town's jurisdiction to the watershed. Um, and putting in place regulations which would require people to obtain a permit before certain work could be done. Um, and the second one is ten forty-one regulations, which would allow the town to be involved in activities, areas of interest that the town isn't typically involved in or isn't permitted to be involved in as a general matter. Um, and the area that we have talked about previously is related to arterial highways and um, involvement in C dot projects and state highways. Um, so I, I just want to set it up that way because they're, they're two separate ordinances, two separate regulations, but they are pretty similar. Um, and I would say that both of them do take, would take quite a bit of work to put in place. Um, so just want to let you know that. Um, the, the, the watershed regulations um, would allow the town to protect your water and your waterworks. to protect your water and your water works. In order to get the watershed regulations in place, we would need to hire some type of water specialist to identify what is the watershed and what is the map. Miranda and I had conversations with an attorney for Crested Butte. Crested Butte has put in place watershed ordinance and has, they've used it. The town has used it against a mining operation because a mining operation is within the watershed. We also had a conversation with a woman who is with Northwest Council, Regional Council of Governments. Her name is Ashley, I just had it up, one of my tabs. Ashley Bembeneck, and she's a scientist and a consultant. And she specializes in watershed, watershed planning. So she would be the type of person the town would hire to draw the watershed map. Miranda and I were kind of brainstorming in terms of what the cost would be to draw that map. And I mean, we were thinking maybe 5,000. So I will, that's what we've done in terms of the watershed ordinance and investigating. And I'll, I'll open it up to any questions.
So I see the watershed drawing. It's, it, it follows middle Boulder Creek going through Eldora, the town of Eldora. And I know they have, have septic systems there. So, you know, would that mean that we would disallow their, their septic systems?
What it is, what it is is really for any new projects, then people would need to get permits for any new projects. And I should also mention too, so the map that's in the packet, that is a rudimentary depiction of what the watershed. It, it's actually going to be an oval and not a straight line.
Right.
So it, you know, I, I can't draw something like that. I have no idea. That's not, that's.
But we would have the capacity to choose what kinds of projects we would require a permit for.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's part of the ordinance is designating what activities could potentially impact water quality.
So we could exclude residential septic from that entirely.
Yes.
And, and what is the distance from the creek on either side that would be?
It's actually, so by statute, it's five miles up. I believe it's from the, from the intake.
From the water treatment system?
Which is not even in town.
Okay, yeah, five miles above the point from which it, it is taken. So that's what, you know, the Colorado legislature has said, this is what your watershed is.
Oh, five miles in every direction?
No.
Okay, just upstream.
Correct.
And then what about the stream banks? How much of the stream bank does it cover?
It, it's going to be beyond the stream banks. So it'll be area that flows into the creek.
Okay.
And that's what I, I can't do that for you. That's, you need a science expert.
So it would be $5,000 to create the map?
And that's an estimate, yeah.
And then in order to have license to enforce the regular, what would, what would the whole thing cost? To put in place?
Would have, then you'd have my time to draft an ordinance. You know, we have some pretty good ordinances here that we can use as examples. I think many communities have followed, you know, somebody did it first and other people have followed those ordinances. So it, I mean, I don't know that it's going to be a lot of time on my end, but it, it is still, it would take time to put it together. And you would have to review it and decide if you like what's in, in the ordinance.
And one of the major reasons that this came up in the first place, I think, was because of mining operations in the general Netherlands area, none of which would fall within this watershed, as I understand it.
Yeah, I mean, I can't say.
Right, you can't say for sure, but it's unlikely that any of those operations would actually fall within the jurisdiction that we would be giving ourselves by passing this ordinance. So in terms of maybe if there is a sense of urgency to do this, I'm, I'm not seeing it. I don't know what, what would cause any kind of urgency in, in doing this rather than putting our time, for instance, into annexation or something along those lines.
Well, there's a list of things that we could disallow. The new sewage disposal system, timber harvesting, drilling operations altering water drainage courses, spraying or using herbicides, surface and subsurface mining. So basically they're, they're environmental protections for our water supply and the, and, and just the, the environment around the water system.
I think they're all very excellent ideas. I just, in terms of like, I'm just trying to rank priorities here for what this board needs to get done. And it doesn't rank very highly in my mind, at least in terms of there being a situation that we need to resolve right now, that we would need this kind of an ordinance in order to, to solve, right?
That's true. I, I would disagree with you though on the, it may not be urgent, but to me it's utterly important that we, it, it's a bedrock issue for me.
I think it's very good, yes.
We protect the long-term water supply. And the mine, the mine may be out of our watershed now, but the next mine very well could be right in the middle of it.
Indeed.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Tom here. This is Tanya.
Thank you, mine.
I think for the small investment and really small amount of time, we spent a lot more time discussing way less important things and spent a lot of money on things that are way less important, in my opinion. Yet we plot on with it. And this seems like a great endeavor and I applaud whoever came up with this to bring it before us. So thank you.
Yeah, I think this is existential in my book. Jonathan?
I'm curious when it comes down to certain things existing within this proposed area. Would our regulations then be a additional requirements after Boulder County? Who is obviously the individual really in charge of this area because it is incorporated Boulder County.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great thing about this, this authority that you have is that it does exceed your boundaries. And it does give you authority to require whomever, you know, property owner, company to come to the town and get a permit.
But it would supersede Boulder County's regulations?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, they could work in tandem.
Okay. But essentially counties would be, and county is the baseline, then ours would be an additional requirement through the 1041 regulation, correct?
Through, it's not actually 1041, it's through this watershed.
Through the watershed, okay.
But so.
Using 1041 to enact the watershed.
No.
Forty-one separate.
Separate entirely.
If I confused anybody, but they're two separate. The, the overarching, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The, they're similar in that they give you additional authority and jurisdiction where you wouldn't have it. But they're two separate jurisdictions.
Sweet, thank you for clarifying that. So in essence, if we were to pursue this, write this, in the event that Eldora ever again went for an expansion into this hessy area, instead of just being able to send letters to the Boulder County Commissioners as the board of trustees, well, we spend a lot of time taking public comment about it, we would actually have a vote.
Yeah.
And we would actually be able to enforce things on, let's say, Eldora Ski Resort if they tried to expand into the watershed.
Yeah, if they were doing things that you had outlined in your ordinance, the regulation, that would require a permit.
You know, I can agree with trustee Combs Ismail's sentiments that in terms of priority, this might not be like topped around the list. But being that at this point, this would be directing town staff, particularly Attorney Madsen here to start working on this. I would actually like to see this pursued to a certain extent. It does give us a little bit more power. It allows us to know a little bit what's going on in Eldora. It's going to actually make us connect with Boulder County Unincorporated a lot more because they will have to start interacting with us about what's going on with septics in Eldora. Frankly, the septic situation in Eldora is way more of a concern to me than anything coming out of any of our mines here. For the same reason as the low metal content in our town water. There's low metal content in these mines. What there is, is a high amount of biological content as a result of our septics. So I'm in support of this.
Can I make a suggestion? Oh, sorry, Karen. Go ahead.
Oh, um, so, so I'd like to know what the Boulder County regulations are related to protection of our watershed. Because if we're just duplicating what they already have in place, I, I'm not, not sure that we need to do this.
Well, the key thing there though is that their commissioners get to vote based on the application that someone makes. We don't.
Good point.
Yeah.
Good point. So, yeah, you know, I feel like we have some momentum on this, this effort currently and that I, you know, I would be in favor of continuing with it at some level.
My suggestion was that I think it would be helpful if there was a trustee who was kind of willing to take point on it, to usher it along and great, perfect. Great. Cause to me it feels very overwhelming to add this, another thing, so. Fantastic. Well, then I will support with my comments and my votes, but not necessarily with any development behind the scenes.
I would have one request while we pursue this, which is that you reach out to the landowners at Arapahoe Ranch and you make sure that they are a very, very, very part of this process. Cause I would not want us to be regulating anything that they have been doing historically and then coming in there and telling them they can't do that.
Oh, yeah. We've, before I got elected, I started this discussion. Great. Okay, do we have what we need?
I, I do, yes. So directed forward with Mayor Protem Mahal.
Yep.
Great.
Public comment?
You, you're gonna be, yeah, good point. Is anybody still with us that wants to comment? Hearing none? Be on your way. You might be in bed before two.
We have one more.
One more.
Motion to extend meeting.
Second.
For how long?
Well, say till 11, but hopefully we don't have to take that long.
Okay. All righty, second. Hold the vote.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismael?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahal?
Yes.
Trustee Corvelon?
Yeah.
And trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, did you want to do public comment on?
There was none.
There were no, okay, good. Okay, perfect. So I guess I'm, I'm, we're talking 1041 regulations. Okay, 1041 regulations are limited to the boundaries of the town. So we're just talking about Netherlands boundaries, but they allow you to regulate items that, you know, you wouldn't regulate under your land development code or other regulations. And specifically, one of the things we've talked about is Highway 119 and C dot. And it essentially, they give you a seat at the table. And so, for example, if C dot is going to make a change to Highway 119, C dot would need to come to the town to get a permit to be able to make that change to Highway 119. And the example that my firm has been working on is with Blue River. And Blue River has Highway nine going through it. And C dot has said that in Blue River, we want to put a chain up station. And so, you know, that can really impact the community. You have lighting impacts, you have noise, all kinds of things that has an impact on the community. If they didn't have 1041 regulations, C dot could do whatever they wanted. And so now, C dot and Blue River are in a position where they are negotiating with one another and Blue River is having some say in what does this chain up station look like? And, you know, potentially it could be a situation where Blue River says, no, we're not going to give you a permit for this. You can't do this. But I think more often than not, what it comes down to is that it's a conversation as to how whatever change is made is done with the least impacts on the community.
I have a big question. Could we get C dot to allow golf carts over the bridge?
Um, I, yeah. So I don't think that that is something that is within 1041 authority. It's more of what they're doing to their property and changes that they would be making to their property.
This would include transmission lines and things like that too, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so the question before us is.
Well, I, I, I think it's another priority question. Is this a priority for you? Is this something that the board of trustees really wants to be working on at this point in time?
And I guess I just want to caution, there's a lot of say a lot going on. And so, you know, as town staff, while we think this is great, we don't feel like this is a priority and would ask that that be considered because this is something that really the public works team would have to take on. And with utilities being so short-staffed, I just don't think we have the capacity.
Could we revisit this in 120 days?
Hope or so, no, yeah. I think we'll be in a much better place in, in 120 days than to do this now.
I think that right now watershed stuff is important. Your transportation plan is important. There's a lot of, we've got a lot of moving parts. And I think in the interest of Nada, we're loading ourselves. I, I know that what you're talking about is 100% real. Things like this can happen. I wish to God they'd saw, they'd fix their crosswalks, for instance. But we, I think we're hitting the point, the breaking point and we're almost, we're almost there.
Well, in terms of things we want C dot to do, if they do come to, if we do have these regulations in place and they have to come to us, if they want to do things, we all of a sudden have a bargaining chip that we didn't have before.
Yeah. Leverage is good with them.
Yeah, this is Tanya. I hope we do come back and talk about this because I think it's super important that we have a seat at the table with C dot. You mentioned the weir though, and the weir is Boulder County, right?
The weir?
It's actually city, that's City of Boulder.
Yeah, City of Boulder, but.
That's what I mean, but it was on the list of things that 1041 could be used to have us some power over. It was in the, it was in the packet. So it's more than just C dot, then it's anything on our perimeter.
Well, it's anything that's in area of state interest, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Because that is something we've wanted to redo and redo. And always the answer is it's City of Boulder, there's nothing we can do. So if we did investigate this further, it would give us also more power over the weir. Is that true? Like we could make decisions regarding building it?
Yep. Or from what I'm understanding, at least from Attorney Madsen, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's, that it's more as, we have a say when someone else who has an interest is trying to do something.
So it's not about.
It's not us initiating projects.
Yes, exactly, yes.
So it's more just as a defense.
Right.
Gotcha. All right.
Yeah, another example that I have is a developer wanted to put in a wastewater treatment plant in a development. And so that would be something that, you know, if you designated that as an area of interest, then that developer would have to come to you if they put in a private wastewater treatment plant in their development. I mean, so.
So let's say if we did enact this, tungsten trail was on there, Barker is on there because it's somewhat partially there. That means when City of Boulder went to do improvements to tungsten trail, the weir, potentially even Barker Dam, we would at least have a seat at the table.
Yes.
Yeah, so let's come back to this. They, they're resurfacing the outside of the dam and painting it next year. They, it's in their reports.
Yeah, I know, I just, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I would agree with Mahal that not right now, but. Yeah, I would agree with Mahol that, uh, not right now, but let's put this on the back burner. Maybe I'd say two hundred and forty days, maybe give it a year. Let's get a full board first and maybe with two new more members, we'll have more openings.
Let's get a full utility department.
Oh, that would be nice too.
So, so just, I just want to say a couple of things about the ten forty-one and the weir and, um, uh, the, the state highways and C dot. So, um, expansion of the weir crossing is in the comprehensive plan, just to let folks know. And also, um, from a transportation viewpoint, I think having a ten forty-one for the state highways would be very beneficial for us. So we could have control over flashing beacons and, um, design of crosswalks that are, um, night sky friendly and also, uh, you know, maybe, uh, um, a bike lane, et cetera.
Miranda, uh, let's keep this in our eyesight. Uh, we'll take a look at this maybe in, in September, October. Does that, uh, give you the, I guess that gives you the directive that we need? Um, is any, do we need to put this out to see if anybody else is, uh, wants to speak on this in the public, in the public? Who's out there?
It's like radioing for aliens. Is anybody out there?
Um, are you seeing anybody, Miranda? Okay, can we close public comment then? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, other business.
Okay, let's move on to other business. Is there other business?
Well, I have a question. Um, why don't we, when we schedule the agenda, put all the Attorney Mancy stuff together at the beginning so that we don't make her sit around and have to pay for all the hours?
Especially when she has to drive to Breckenridge next.
I mean, I know that, um, one's a discussion and one's an action and, but is there any way that they could just be coordinated better in the future? Or no?
We'll work on that.
All right. Well.
Do you have other business, Tanya?
That was it.
Okay, that's a good one. That's a really good one. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Call the vote.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Corvelon?
Yes.
Trustee Baumhofer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
And trustee Kums Ismael?
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye, Tanya.
We're adjourned at ten thirty-five.